Seven P M. This is the Lunandary Town Council meeting for Monday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a open public comment.
Thank you.
And Lynn, do you want to start?
Lynn Wiles, forty-six Barley Hill Road, the chairman of the Utilities Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me tonight and good evening, everybody. Just wanted to give you an update on the Community Choice Aggregation Program. I've been up here probably the last two years talking about it and market conditions have been such where we just haven't been able to push it forward. I had a telephone conversation with Freedom Energy Logistics, our aggregation partner earlier this, or I should say late last week. And the conditions are actually looking favorable for an implementation coming up at the end of Q one next year. So the P U C, New Hampshire P U C is going to be setting rates in December, early December. I would like to bring the chairman of Freedom Energy Logistics to a council meeting, talk about the plan, talk about where we want to go with the plan. I wanted to let you folks know about it so he can come up with some questions and we can have a constructive conversation, but it's looking good. The P U C is kind of restructured. One of the chair, one of the commissioners is no longer on the board, so it's down to two and they're looking at helping Eversource recover some under collections, which means that the rates are going to be going up for Eversource customers. So it's looking good for us. So just like I say, wanted to get that on your radar screen. If you have any questions, formulate them, send them to me or we can wait till the next meeting. But I'm guessing either the last meeting in December or the first meeting in January to have them come in.
Anyone have any questions for?
That was the question I was going to ask. When were you going to have him come?
Sure.
You said December.
Yeah, we have to get the rates. I don't want to have him come in before we know the rates and what, you know, the, what that means to Lunandary's customers. But I think we're in, it's looking like we're going to be in a good position and the way it's looking.
That be a public hearing so that people can ask that man questions, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And he'd be more than willing to ask.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I figured it's better to have it from the horse's mouth than here, so take advantage of him being here.
Well, I wonder if it might be a little preemptive to be a public hearing as it's not like we're signing anything or putting in anything into place just yet. I think it would be worthwhile for us to have the questions for him and make a directive and more expedient on his time instead of making a public hearing where we're not signing anything, we're not putting anything into place just yet.
But if we hear from the public, Ted, we might make a decision, yea or nay. And if we make a, say we decide to do it, then it's too late for the public to comment on it.
Well, I'm sure that there would be more than one occurrence where this will be coming up. And I mean, this would be like a first occurrence from the common and then becoming a few more times.
We can figure that out.
Yep.
Well, we'll do. We'll make sure the public's involved either way.
Sure, I think that's a great idea. And Deb, we went through a whole process and I can fill you in offline about the process and where we're at with public hearings and public comment periods and things like that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Any questions tonight?
Anybody else's questions? Great, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else have a public comment? None?
No, there's.
Okay.
We just don't get up as quick as you think.
How are you this evening?
Hi, good.
Good.
How are you guys? Good. I just wanted to speak in favor, and you haven't quite discussed it yet, but I understand it will be discussed tonight. The Water Special Assessment Trust Fund. I work with Lynn and folks behind me on the Utilities Committee and we actually heard a little bit about both the Water Capital Reserve Fund and the Water Special Assessment Trust Fund. And I just want to say a couple of things about it. One, I think it's affordable. It makes the water hookups affordable for folks and an ability to stretch out payments over a period of time. Two, it's also optional for the taxpayer. They can either do this or not do this. They don't necessarily need to have the water hookup, but if they want to, they can. It's also nice to have a process in place. Now, at least we have some type of process, and this is a first step. It's not second or third, it's just the first step in the idea of this. And I think it's great to have a process in place and some ideas, options out there. It also allows taxpayers, most importantly, who are in private wells, to have the option of getting water, which could be, which will be better, higher quality drinking water. And it's not just the PFAS or the PFOA in the water, but there are lots of other things, contaminants in water, as most of you know, from radon to arsenic to uranium to a variety of different kinds of contaminants in the water. So I see it in terms of weighing the advantages and disadvantages to be a major advantage. And I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment?
I'm going to read this if it's okay. Robin Stewart, five twenty-two Mammoth. So there's been a few things that have made me questioning what I could have done to be more informed and aware of what's going on in the town regarding the changes that keep coming our way. And I think the best way to express this is for me to give you a few examples. So I'll start with the twenty-eight overlay. A few of us attended the planning board meeting to voice our concern about lifting the overlay. And we were hoping for a delay to see what the long-term effects would be up in our area. It was said that the people at the North End wanted the overlay removed to provide development. However, we never saw anyone say that, only the board. We were told that removing the overlay would prevent more apartments on twenty-eight, which would benefit us all. And Kelly did explain how it all worked and with the caveat that there were some things that were already planned in the background. The planning board approved it. It went to council. A few more people came and expressed concerns to the council and asked for the delay. And an ex-council person came up and explained that he thought it was time to remove it, that the reason it had been placed was gone and the council approved it. Then in September, there was a hearing with the Heritage Committee about a sixty-unit apartment complex on S and S property. I called Kelly, who told me it had been presented in the town prior to that meeting in April with the conceptual plans, a full three months prior to the planning board meeting. Part of the builder's conceptual plan includes the need to have the overlay removed. A developer to submit a conceptual plan, they have already spent quite a bit of money on engineering, on land, on architects. And I wonder if the time for conceptual plans submitted should be listed so the residents are aware that perhaps put on the town website or and/or published in the Lunandary Times. I did hear that that would be considered on the new P U Ds, but I think it should be for all. I've been at meetings where the residents have been expressing concerns about traffic, out-of-control building, impact fees, burdens on the residents for the taxes and the need for conservation land. The board continues to vote against these items. Impact fees could be used to help the intersection of Old Mammoth and Page, which is where I live, but many more intersections in town. And it could, they could be used for the rail trail, for the Lunandary DOT building, et cetera. There's a lot of things that those impact fees could be used for to lessen our tax impact at some point. I listened to the planning board meeting regarding the conservation P U D regs. And although this was a preliminary meeting, there was a discussion about the land size. It was said that residents would have a difficult time recommending the land size. And I'm going to say his name probably wrong, Mr. Farr, Sean. He stated that the board should keep stating the point that, you know, that that's why they did it. And that people will scream the most with simplistic messages without much thought put into them. I suggest rather listen to the residents and perhaps they have put thought into what they say. Disagreement does not mean ignorance. Mr. Dunn, I went to a meeting with, that you were at once, and you said that there are things that you all know that we don't as residents before you make your decisions. And my question is, why not? Why don't we know? Resident engagement is so little because there is feelings that the residents don't have much ability to make any changes. At what point should the residents be brought into prior to the decisions made? So you all have the information from us and it can be considered, and then whatever decisions you make are explained to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? Christine, how are you tonight?
Disappointed that Councilman Faber isn't here. So now it's officially budget.
Name and address.
Huh?
Name and address.
Christine Perez, five Wesley Drive. So it's officially budget season now. And it appears that thanks to our town manager, we'll be doing things by the book unlike years past. Thank you. That being said, we were told that impact fee request would be taken up at budget season. But in spite of my asking, pleading to have it on the agenda this week, I see it is not. Why? Budget season has started. It appears that just about everything that is put before this board is pushed down the road. The impact fees, the P U Ds, the library, the Lions Halls. The only thing that's getting done in a timely manner is the work that the town manager does to rectify the legal items that we have been, that we have not been in compliance with for years. The first master plan survey was clear, the second one clearer. I quote, "Many residents express concern about the pace of development and its impact on Lunandary's rural character. A recurring thing was the call for stricter limits, even moratoriums on new construction, particularly large housing complexes and commercial projects. Several respondents expressed, emphasized the importance of protecting farmland, orchards, and the Mosh Gosh Conservation Area. Others voiced frustration on zoning variances and urged stronger enforcement of existing rules. While some participants suggested alternative strategies such as higher impact, as higher impact fees or requiring developers to conserve land in proportion to what they build, a smaller number favored continued development to expand tax base overall. The comments reflect a strong, strong desire to slow growth and prioritize the preservation of natural agricultural resources. Once again, I tell you that we have lost opportunity for hundreds of thousands of dollars because of poor judgment on behalf of previous counselors and town managers. House Bill one sixty-eight was signed into law this year that would allow fees to be paid towards public work facilities, the building that we want. This bill enables, quote, enables municipalities to act, impact fees on developments to help meet the need occasioned by that development for construction or improvement to public work facilities. Amherst, Durham, Hudson, Salem, Wolfboro, Wyndham, Derry, Atkinson, Sandown, Plastow, Newton, and Danville are just a few of the many towns that are successfully utilizing impact fees. Those of us that come to, come forward to speak for actions are called radicals or names or even false prophets who falsely claim to speak on behalf of others. While the others have spoken, they are echoed everywhere. They are echoing everything that we have been saying for years. What are you trying to do? Are you trying to not accomplish anything this year? I can think of one person that would love that and use it against you in the upcoming elections. Don't let that happen.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment?
Vaughn, can I just ask the town manager something?
I just let, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Kevin Smith, six King Philip Drive. Because I missed the public comment at the last meeting, I just wanted to come up for a few minutes and pay tribute to someone who I considered to be a local Lunandary legend, and that was Reed Clark, who we all, we know we all lost recently. You know, the list of his accomplishments and achievements was very long and I won't go through that list tonight except to say that if we could all maybe do a third of what he did, it would be a life well-lived. Most of you know Reed was a staple at these meetings mostly before COVID. He used to get up to this table right here and he'd speak his mind. Sometimes he'd agree with you, sometimes he wouldn't. But he always did it in a very respectful and civil manner. And he'd always end his comments with that twinkle in his eye and his staple, now carry on. And we all did. And I'll leave you this, leave you with this one kind of funny story, most memorable one I have of Reed. It was right after a council meeting and it was a warm summer night. And at that time Reed wasn't very mobile and always had to use his walker. And he came up to me at the end of the meeting and he said, he says, Kevin, could you give me a ride home? Phyllis is unable to take me. And I said, Reed, I would love to give you a ride home. I said, except my Jeep doesn't have any doors on it right now and doesn't have the roof on it. It probably isn't the safest way for you to be traveling. And he just looked at me and deadpan says, well, that sounds like fun. So I said, giddy up, Reed. And brought the Jeep around. And so he comes outside and Jim Butler and I hoisted him into the passenger side seat. And the whole time I'm thinking, oh, man, this, so much could go wrong with this. We strapped him in and I left town hall and from town hall to his home on Stonehedge Road, I've never taken every corner in Lunandary so slow in my entire life. Because all I kept thinking was, if this guy flies out the side of the car, not only is it the end of Reed, it's the end of me. I'll be banished. But we made it, we made it home safely to his house. We pulled into the driveway and I just looked over at him and he's laughing. And he looks over at me and he goes, we'll do it again in two weeks. So God bless Reed, God bless Phyllis. They will be missed by many in this town.
Thank you for that story. Deb, you had a public comment?
Well, no, I just had, I wanted to talk to the town manager. Mr. Town Manager, would it be possible for you to put together like a really quick white sheet or summary of what impact fees would look like for us? Is it possible to get that like very quickly?
If the council so wishes, yes.
I mean, I wish to see it. Does anybody else wish to see it?
Want to see it? Go ahead. I'm fine with it. As we were asking, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Up next, we have board appointments and reappointments. Tonight, we have Jason Goldman, who has submitted his resignation from the Budget Committee. I will accept a motion to accept his resignation. I'll make that motion to accept his resignation. Motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes the affirmative. Jason, thank you for all your help on the Budget Committee. How you've been, we appreciate everything you did to help us, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we also want to take up Christopher Kenny's resignation?
Yep, I have him next, yep. I also have a resignation from Christopher Kenny from the Heritage Commission. So I'll accept a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll motion to approve Chris Kenny's resignation from the Heritage Commission. His time will be missed on the Heritage Commission as the chairman of the committee. He was quite, he helped lead that committee quite well.
I agree. I have a motion from Ted.
Second.
Second from Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. Christopher, thank you for your time. It is appreciated. Up next, we have a public hearing on the proposed town charter amendments. And we have a presentation from.
Thank you very much. So just to reiterate what we discussed last meeting, for those who weren't here, this year we are requesting that the council put forward two proposed charter amendments to help modernize and update the charter to reflect contemporary municipal governance practices and to remove some outdated material from our charter that is no longer relevant to streamline it. These two, the first of these two amendments is simply to eliminate outdated transition information from back in nineteen, it was put in in nineteen ninety-six when the charter was approved because we were transitioning from a select board town administrator form of government to a council manager form of government. There's three specific areas of the charter that we're suggesting be struck entirely. That's all of Article ten, which is transition provisions, section three point eleven and section eight point five. Again, all of those solely deal with transition that was only relevant in nineteen ninety-seven. The second amendment is adjusting the taxonomy or organization and numbering of the charter. This amendment is designed to reorganize the information in a manner more conducive to the way that the town does govern, the town governs now. The taxonomy that they used when they created it was something that came out of the best practices of about nineteen eighty-seven. So it was already a little bit outdated when it was created in the mid nineties. But now the most recent guidance has it structured in kind of a much more logical way. And what you have in this packet with you is both the redline version of the original charter with all the strikeouts from the first suggested change and all the, every sentence in the charter is highlighted and it's indicated where it falls in the new organization. So that's the redline copy. And then you also have a clean copy of what the charter would look like. And I want to stress that nothing is changing in this charter whatsoever. There is no, I didn't even update errors in grammar or omitted words or anything like that. The only changes, and you'll see them in red in the clean copy, is where punctuation had to be adjusted to reflect the new organization.
Any questions from the council? This is a public hearing, so I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing. Motion from Deb.
Second.
Second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. It's a public hearing, anyone wish to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Deb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. Back to the council, what do we want to do?
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
I looked it over, I thought it was good.
Good to move forward. Thank you for your hard work.
Good job, thank you.
Yeah. Consensus.
Motion.
I need a motion to, the motion is to move it to the council, move it to the clerk to submit to the state.
Okay, I'll, I move that the Lunandary Town Council hereby submits the proposed amendments to the town clerk for submission to the state of New Hampshire for review and approval by state departments.
So motion from Dan, second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative.
Good job.
Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing to discuss and act upon the building permit and land use application fee schedule. Ms. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just as a reminder, and for those who weren't here last time, we, before you this evening are the updated building permit fee schedule and land use permit fee schedules. So again, our building permits and then what we typically see come through planning, site plan and subdivision applications, so those fee schedules. So again, we, we did an analysis of other communities and what their fees are in comparison to Lunandary. But also we're trying to update our fees to help offset the costs of providing the Open Gov software service, which I believe you're all familiar with. And again, the goal here is so that the taxpayers aren't solely responsible for subsidizing that, that software platform and that the fees are helping cover that cost, the users are covering that, that fee, that cost associated with that software program. So that's the intent of the update. Like you highlighted, this is a public hearing, but we're seeking the council to approve the fee schedules as presented before you.
Any questions in the council?
Kelly, when was the last time that we updated our fees roughly?
So it's kind of a mixed answer, but in some instances, as long as, you know, five years ago, maybe more, depending on which particular fee you're asking about, but it's overdue.
Okay, thank you.
And correct me, you said we were going to do this now on a regular basis? And are we more in line with what all the other towns are doing price-wise?
So we're, I mean, you don't always want to, I mean, the town manager highlighted last time that that's not always the measure that you want to use is, is how do we align with other towns, but it's certainly a factor that, to look at in terms of what the appropriate fee is for each type of application. But yes, I mean, in my opinion, we should be looking at the fees on a regular basis. Whether that results in the need to update them or not is a different conversation, but that's, that's my intent at least to going forward.
I'm glad we're looking at this now. Thank you. Lot of work.
Any other question in the council?
No, thank you for your great work.
I will accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion from Ted.
Second.
Second from Deb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. It's a public hearing, anyone wish to opine? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion from Ted.
Second.
Second from Deb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. Back to us, what do we want to do?
I think it's about time and I'm glad we're doing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm right.
So I'll move that the Lunandary Town Council hereby approve the building and land use fee schedules as presented pursuant to RSA forty-one, colon, nine, dash, A.
Have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative.
I have to step down, Vaughn.
Okay. Okay.
Just for the record, Council Paul's accusing herself.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Let the record show that Council Paul is recusing herself. Up next, we have a discussion to act upon changes to the criteria for the elderly exemption. Mr. Hampton.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. So, this is a regular event now to make sure that we adjust to keep current, both the exemption benefit amount, but also the qualification standards on a regular basis. And that basis is typically our revaluation occurrence. So we did a revaluation this year.
I forget if we had, tasked you with provide anything new for today or not. I can't remember. You had any other information you had to provide today? I can't remember if we had asked you about anything.
So, I mean, I, I do have a little bit more information. I just want to make sure that it's tuned to what it was that you were hoping to elicit. So, basically, the benefit amount is changing in relation to the changes in the assessed value. The qualification standards are, we're recommending they change based on the CPA, CPI increase over the last two years. The total amount of actual value that's exempted by these, which I think was the request to find out by category how much value was being exempted, I can go through that. In the, the disability exemption, a total, actual exemption is $2,116,733 for the 17 recipients. Now, that is, that's the current amount of exemption, and that will increase to $2,757,566. It's a little bit less than the maximum potential because some people's properties are not valued as much as the exemption amount, and so therefore, they only use a portion of it. And other people receive veterans' tax credits, and so those come into play before the exemption of, of the value. So, the, for the elderly, the total elderly exemption amount under the new proposed exemptions would be $38,194,966. And that breaks down by category. The elderly, youngest age category is about $9 million in taxable value. The middle category is about $13 million, and then the oldest category is about $20 million in total assessed, total assessed value. All in all, for the disabled and the elderly exempt, it's about $40,952,000 of value that gets exempted for those 193, I think it is, is the count, people who receive those benefits.
I have a question for you when it regards to asset limits. Does that take into account, say, for example, someone's on a pension, a teacher pension or pension somewhere else? Does that take into account what their full value is from that pension is? Or what happens when someone has a pension?
So, a typical pension, so a defined benefit pension, has no real cash value.
Exactly.
And so, it's counted as pure income.
Okay.
One that might take...
So only the income that you're getting that year?
Correct.
So it wouldn't go into the pile for your assets then, correct?
Correct. Now, if you had, and the same is true if you had an annuity, so you had purchased an annuity that provided for you a certain stream of income. If you have no reversion or rewrite in that annuity, then that would simply be counted as income in that year.
Hmm. But they'd have to know in their document if they did have that in there?
And, and we help people to find their way through all of the documentation. For the benefit of the public and, and for the council, the deadline to apply for this exemption or these exemptions is April 15th. There's a pretty substantial burden to be able to help us to understand what is the income and asset structure of a person's finances. So we encourage people to make sure they get an application in early, begin to provide us with the information, but we'll help them through the process.
I think that's a, a piece on the pensions not many people would fully understand that they may actually qualify or not qualify for.
Well...
Because the asset item, they may think, oh, well, I may be getting all this money, I may, must have got an asset that may go on beyond the 171.
Yeah, it, it's, it's an interesting question. Many people do understand that there's a difference there. We do see a difference in the calculation of assets for people who have self-funded rather than a defined benefit pension. So if they had a 401K and they're receiving payments from that...
Right.
We have to count that 401K account as a financial asset.
Of course, right. That's the big difference there, yeah.
Yeah. But we're limited in what we can do by what the legislature has adopted for the rules of the road.
No, thank you for the clarification for us and for everyone at home.
Any other questions from the council? No? All right, I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. Anyone from the public wish to just opine on this issue? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to close the public hearing. Hold on. Okay, all right. Ray, come on up.
Ray, President 3, Gary Drive. A lot of this is a little confusing to me, but if I understand correctly, your resident is not, your home is not considered in part of this. Is, is, am I saying that correctly?
Go ahead, sir.
For most people, the equity that they have in their home that they reside in is not counted as an asset. If they have a large piece of land that has subdivision or development potential, that might be counted in some way. Or if they own other property, the equity that they own in that other property would be counted.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm considering or wondering about is if somebody owns a $2 million house in the town of Londonderry, that's not considered as an asset or value in this calculation?
No. The law is clear that the equity that a person owns in their principal place of residence is exempt from consideration.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I understood, but I mean, I, I think, what are we trying to do here? I think we're trying to give some folks that are of particularly elderly age and have very little income coming in other than maybe a small retirement or social security, to give them a break. And if somebody's really wealthy, and they've, they've done well for themselves, and we can't hold that against them, but is it, is it, is it really fair to compare that with an elderly lady that's living all by herself and just barely struggling to get by? I just wonder about that.
Ray, I think your situation that you're describing would probably be of a rarity.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, there's probably not too many multimillion dollar houses in Londonderry, although there are some million dollar houses.
Even if so, to that point, you most likely had assets on the side that would then disqualify you for qualifying.
Maybe, or maybe not. And, and that's, I guess that's another question I have is, is, and, and you, I believe you did explain that, I'm not sure I caught it all. If you have money in the stock market and so forth, you have money in the bank, is there a limit on that, or how is that considered?
The limit is 171,600.
For everybody, everybody, no matter what age?
And there's an income limit. If you're single, 51,200, and if you're married, 63,000.
Thank you. And if it's in a family trust, how is that?
That's a wonderful question for Steve to answer. He may know that better.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes, this is probably here.
So, there are trusts, and then there are trusts. So the nature of a trust is twofold. One is what's called a grantor or revocable trust. It remains your property. So you may place it into the trust, but at any time, you may retrieve it. It is still your property. There are trusts, though, that are irrevocable. Once you dedicate your property to an irrevocable trust, it's no longer your property. It's now the trust property. And so, that kind of a trust will not qualify as being an owner of real estate in Londonderry because, in fact, it's the trust that owns the real estate and not the person.
Okay. Well, thank you for explaining that.
Thank you, Ray.
And allowing me to speak.
And Steve, to go on that item further, for, I'm sure there's quite a few revocable trusts in town. The trust itself, if it's in a revocable trust, even though the members of the family who live there of an elderly age, they would still not qualify for the exemption.
If it's an irrevocable trust, the one caveat on that is a person may retain a life estate or so, the permission to live in the home for the rest of their life. And in an irrevocable trust, then still qualify for the exemption.
Thank you, Steve.
Christine Perez, 5, Wesley Drive. That was one of the things I was going to bring up because that was in my committee last year about those trusts. But, so I, I need to understand this. So I moved to, hypothetical, I moved to Londonderry 20 years ago and I paid $200,000 for my home. And now, my home in Londonderry is worth $800,000. And I paid off my home, so I have a home valued at $800,000, okay? And I fall under the limit of income that you're allowing. That home and that asset is not taken into consideration so that I could literally be getting an elderly benefit and then sell my house and have $800,000 in my pocket?
Absolutely, sir, yes.
The, the law is clear that we have to count the value of all of the assets that you possess except for the value of your principal residence.
And that's in the RSAs?
That's in the law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else have?
Can you tell us what that law is?
Come on, Martha, yeah. Come on. This is... One of Martha's, yeah.
38 Chastor Drive. Can you tell me what that law is that you just referenced? That's what the law says, that your home isn't considered in that? There, I know there's a homestead exemption in New Hampshire, that's a different thing.
That's completely different. Completely different. The homestead exemption is about what you might owe a creditor and what they can attach for property.
Right.
There is no homestead tax exemption in New Hampshire. The, in chapter 70, RSA 72, 27...
Oh, is this part of our attachments tonight?
Yeah, I think you're going to be able to find it here. For persons of disabilities, it's in 7237B.
Okay.
And for persons who are elderly, it's going to be, I believe it's 27A, RSA 7227A.
And is that part of the packet that was given tonight?
Yeah, that's all, that's all in the packet.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Martha.
Tony, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Tony DiFrancesco, 1 Cheshire Court. So, I usually, when I come up to speak, I'm usually all about unattended consequences. This might be an exception to that or not. I will tell you that I queried the assessor's office without a 91A, and within 24 hours had what I asked for. And I do have a schedule of exemptions slash cred, excuse me, credits for 2025. I don't know if you have it in your packet or not. If you don't, I'd like to give it to you because I'm going to be speaking to that. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Okay, say, this came directly from the assessor's office, Laura, from Laura Keely, who emailed between...
And while Tony is handing that out, this is what I was quoting from when I spoke earlier. So that's the basis of those numbers.
So, to start off with, I was a proponent of this program when it started. I applauded it when the state RSAs came to be, and I am still a proponent of it. The devil is in the details, which is what we have here before us for you all to make a decision. It's a little bit complicated because municipalities are the only quote-unquote business that you're asked to make a decision on buying something that you don't know what the price is going to be. And I'm, and I'm sure our assessor will, will, will agree with me that we really don't know exactly how much this is going to cost yet because we don't have a tax rate yet. And we won't have a tax rate for a little, for a little bit. Am I doing okay so far? So, no argument with that? So, 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 so this is a tough one, right? So it's, so, you're going to buy a car, you don't know how much it costs yet. We can, we know how much it cost us previous, and we know how many people we have. Interesting, on the chart that you have, the 80-year-old exemptions, the number went, went down, unfortunately. Some moved on and some just moved. And so, that certainly is unfortunate. But I will tell you that I'm, I'm cautious on this type of stuff that you don't know how much it's going to cost. And I will also tell you that, that I don't understand why in, in, in times which we can say are uncertain financially, both on the federal level, the state level, and on the local level, why we would increase or decrease the exemption, you know what I'm talking about, in two different ways. I don't know why, on a year like this, we wouldn't leave them alone. I don't see the need to increase on the CPI. I don't see the need to decrease the amount that, that you, you need to qualify or not qualify. And I have always objected to the word elderly in this whole thing. I'm 72 years old, I do not consider myself elderly, nor do I think, if, if I were leading the charge, I would not have that category. I think it's way too young. 65 to 72, 74, 65 to 74, I think it's way too young. If it was me, I'd start it at 75. But at, at the least, I, I think the other thing that I have a problem with is that, that living, excuse me, it's not living in Londonderry, my understanding, it's, the RSA is living in New Hampshire. However, Steve's going to correct me on that.
Yeah, go ahead, sir, yeah.
In order to qualify, you do have to be a resident in Londonderry to qualify in Londonderry.
Got it, but it's, it's, but the, but the pre-qualifier, help me out with the three-year thing. So, so you have to live in New Hampshire for three years... So, you have to live in New Hampshire for three years, but do you have to live in Londonderry for three years?
No.
No. So you can move into Londonderry on April fourteenth, fill out the forms in time, April first, April what?
If you move into Londonderry by March thirty-first.
March thirty-first, okay.
Then you could.
And filled out the forms.
Fill out the forms and qualify. But that's all in the law. And the law is all or nothing. It's like the age categories. That's all in the law.
Understood.
And the law is all or nothing, and I.
Understand, yeah. And I'm not saying there's anything that we can do about that. What I'm doing is I'm adding ammunition to my objection to things that you can't control.
Tony, I think where that would come into play, say, for example, if someone moved from Manchester to Londonderry, as we would have a better situation for that individual here compared to Manchester.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. But, but people need to know that. It's not a person that has, necessarily has a vested interest in the town of Londonderry. It could be somebody that moved in the day before the final day of exemption paperwork, and get a, in the case of a, the first category, about a three-thousand-dollar exemption. Three-thousand dollars off of their tax rate. Three-thousand dollars less that they would have to pay. Rough numbers, based on sixteen dollars and fourteen cents. Again, we don't know what the number's going to be, yet, okay? But if it were me, all the things that you cannot change, the two things, one of the two things that you can change is, don't change the number based on the CPI, and don't, don't do, don't do the, raise the amount, which actually makes more people able to Roughly, you're talking about six-hundred-thousand dollars, give or take, using the sixteen-dollar and fourteen number, ballpark, spitballing it, whatever you want to call it, it's not a totally accurate number. But it's going to be pretty close, depending on what the tax rate does. And it just doesn't seem to me that this is a good time to do that. So I would, I would question particularly those two things. I have other, other things to consider here as well. One of them being, looking at the list from your packets, looking at the municipality, I'm on page two of your packet, it says, it's the second box municipalities, and this is who we're being compared to, right? I don't know why our numbers, I don't know why would we want our numbers near the top of all those towns that we're being compared to. I don't know why we wouldn't be somewhere in the middle, which would be leaving it pretty much where we are now, as opposed to raising the exemption limit, okay? And when you, when you look at those, the median, right, what's, what is it, half that's higher, and half that's lower, and you're right, right in the middle, that's the median? Why wouldn't we want to be there, rather than almost near the top? And so, for some of these categories. So, and for an example, the seventy-five to seventy-nine, we want to go to two-sixty-five, I believe, is where the assessor is suggesting that we go to. That's the top, you know, other than, other than Nashua, which, and Hollis, but, anyway.
And Portland.
Just a thought, yeah, just a thought, just a thought. Again, throwing things against the wall, there's a lot going on, we have a lot of things that we don't know about that's going to happen. There's two things that you have the ability to control, and I will take any questions from you, if you have any.
You don't have any questions for Tony?
Nope.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else for a public comment?
Good evening, sir. Glenn Douglas, Six Overlook Ave. This is interesting. Talk about stuff you don't know. You bought into this house, into this town fifty years ago. You paid ten-thousand dollars for your house, and now someone is telling you, hey, your house is worth one-point-two-million dollars, you can pay tax on it. I am all for giving people that have paid taxes for their entire life a break. This is, seems to just be giving a few people a little bit of extra benefit. I mean, we're making an argument because we don't know how much we're going to raise the tax rate? I sat here with a woman, I won't say elderly, she was in tears, because she couldn't afford to stay here, because she was being taxed to death. She couldn't move in with her kids, she had to leave the state, because she was taxed to death. You don't own your house, you rent your house, because there's always going to be someone that comes knocking at your door and says, excuse me, you didn't pay the one-point-five-million tax bill. Let's give these people a break. I mean, come on.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, this sounds like a great opportunity to, to help the public to understand a benefit program, which is available to all taxpayers in the town of Londonderry, who by age would meet the elderly qualification, or by disability would meet the disability portion. They may defer all or some of their taxes, if they can show that they're being taxed out of their house. And there's a process by which they come to the assessing department. Now, there's an application process, it creates a lien on their property, that can be repaid at any time, with no repayment penalty, there's no application fee, it's a simple five-percent interest rate. It helps people to be able to stay in their home, by accessing the equity that they have built up, like that young man's example. So if you hear of anyone who is in that situation, and I'm imploring the public that's watching tonight, if you know of anybody who's in that situation, please, have them reach out to the assessing department. We have tools that can help them right away.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to close the hearing.
I had another question for Mr. Hamilton.
Okay.
I was going to bring it back to the council, Ted.
Sure.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion from Ted.
Second.
Second from Dan, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes affirmative.
Bring it back to the council, so Ted.
So, going back to the financials on this, if I'm reading the spreadsheet that was handed out, that you said you were going off of as well, are we going up by a total of new, total exemption by two-point-six million? Or which column should I be looking at here?
For the increase?
Yeah.
So, that would be the actual, total actual column.
The one in the middle?
That is what we are granting now, and the total.
Thirty-three, five?
Yes.
And we're moving to thirty-five, six?
Right.
So, one-point-one million more?
But that's just in the growth of the value, as applied to each one of those properties, the seventeen percent or so, plus or minus, increase. And a way to think about it is, because of the growth in value over the last two years, if these were kept the same, that would be effectively a seventeen percent reduction in the benefit amount.
Right.
Because the values are higher.
So I guess the real question would be is, is there a difference from what we're giving for an elderly exemption already, compared to what we'll be moving forward?
What we'll be giving, but, so, based on the number of?
Right, so, for example, we had before, how many people that were getting a complete covered of their taxes before? Will that number be changing?
I think only by.
Up or down?
Only by one, I think.
Only by one, okay. So I guess that's the big question, then.
Right.
Because if we want to look at how it will be affecting our budget going forward, you know, we have to take into account, how many more, how much dollar value is being exempted?
Right. One question that often gets asked, and hasn't yet, but it may only be because you haven't gotten to it yet, is how many more people will qualify, because you're increasing the exemption qualification standard. What we can do is, we can look back in time. I mean, I'm not a social scientist, I can't tell you how many people in the town of Londonderry are going to qualify based on the new limits. But I can tell you what happened the last time that the limits were increased, and that was from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, with that revaluation. In that revaluation, there was about an eighteen-and-a-half percent increase in both the income and asset limits. And we saw an actual net reduction in the number of people who qualified for the exemption. So there was no large increase in the number of people who would qualify.
Interesting.
So, we know that there, you know, unfortunately, there are people who are moving on. Some of them are lucky, they're moving on into a different kind of a living situation. Other people are falling out of the program, unfortunately. And there's also a lot more estate planning that happens nowadays, and a lot more people are putting their property into irrevocable trusts, in order to avoid other kinds of financial hardship in the future, if they wound up in a nursing home, per se. So there are a lot of estate planning maneuvers, that seems to be bringing the pool of available people down. We do the same kind of outreach that we've always done, we, we just went to the senior expo, and tried to help people to understand, we have brochures at our office, we talk to people all the time about the issues. But from twenty-twenty-two, when there were a hundred-and-eighty-four elderly exemption recipients, to twenty-twenty-three, there were a hundred-and-eighty-one, in twenty-twenty-four, it was a hundred-and-seventy-five. So there's a, there's a direction that that's taking. I wouldn't call it a trend, per se, but the one important piece was the large increase in the asset and asset limit, from twenty-two to twenty-three, and the minimal impact, in fact, it went backwards a little bit.
Any other questions?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Sorry.
What's the point of order?
The public comments.
I don't know if you have to open public comment or not.
What's your point of order, though?
I think Mr. Coombs', Council Coombs' question was misunderstood by Steve, on the amount of dollars that the exemptions was going to increase, and it's going to increase from thirty-three, five to thirty-eight, one.
Okay.
If you do the two things, raise it by the CPI, and, and, or the other increase, whichever one it was, if you do both of those things that he's suggesting, then your proposed exemption goes from thirty-three, five to thirty-eight, one, and certainly.
Okay. Did you, did you take that, Ted, as you?
I now see that, yeah, so it actually goes up by about five million, not the one-point-one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, no, thank you for that. Any other question in the council?
I don't have any questions, I just want to make a couple of comments. I think that, you know, it's hard for our seniors, for our elderly people who've lived in this community for a long time, to be forced out of their home, because taxes increase, and if this is a way to help them, everything else has gone up for them. And if this is a way to help them to be able to stay in their home, which I think that that's the goal, is try to keep seniors in their homes, as much as we can, I'm in favor of this, so.
I would also concur with you, Dan, that the public that have spoken to me, think this is a fair program, so.
Yeah. I will make them.
I just had one more item for Mr. Hamilton. So, looking at our chart again, so this is total valuation, not tax dollars collected, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm good to go.
Good.
All right. So I move that the Londonderry Town Council hereby approves Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-two, revising the disabled exemption policy as attached.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Ted. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes affirmative.
I move that the Londonderry Town Council hereby approves Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-three, revising the elderly exemption policy as attached.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Ted. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank you very much for your careful attention to this important matter. They're great questions, and.
I want to thank you, Steve, for a lot of detailed information you gave us, which was very helpful. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Be well.
Now we have a very special presentation, from Vinnie Curro, from Tunnels to Towers. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for your patience.
Joined by the amazing Deputy Chief Holland tonight.
Let the record show that Counsel Paul rejoined the council.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
No, no, you go first. Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Mulholland, thanks for allowing us the time to come tonight. In introduction, my name's Vinnie Curro, I live at one-oh-three High Range Road. I've been a member of the Call Department, which is a volunteer in the town since nineteen-ninety-one, currently serving as a Call Lieutenant, and I coordinate the Car Seat Program, technical name is the Londonderry Child Passenger Safety Program. We're here tonight to present something to try to remember, right? We're trying not to forget, okay? And that's been difficult, so.
Can you go?
I don't think I can control the game.
The nine-eleven was unbelievable. See the people unite behind the flag.
The Tunnel to Towers Foundation has created a nine-eleven mobile exhibit to bring America back together, by remembering the sacrifices of those who gave their lives protecting our country.
We've got these small, little communities that say, I want to remember, I want my, the children here to remember this. And what they do to help firefighters that have lost their lives in line of duty, police officers that have lost their lives in the duty, and I've been to those communities. I think it's important that we, our children, not just about that day and video, but to hear it from us.
Elder in the day that my years were born, this is most gratifying thing ever, though.
I see a remarkable educational tool that this exhibit does in the foundation.
Look out for the nine-eleven Never Forget Mobile Exhibit in your community, and join us now in paying off the mortgages for the families of those who protect our freedoms each and every day.
Thanks, Kelly. So, in a nutshell, I'm going to get emotional, it's okay, bear with me, please. So who? Lieutenant Stephen Siller, Fire Department of New York Lieutenant. The day of the tower, the first tower was hit, there was what New York calls an all-hands. That means everybody goes. Lieutenant Siller was off-duty, he was going to play golf with his family. He turned around, went back to the fire station, grabbed all his gear, seventy pounds, give or take, right, we carry. Tried to get to the towers, could not, the tunnels were full of traffic. He parked his car, and he ran five miles through the tunnel to the towers. He subsequently lost his life when the towers collapsed. There are many programs out there regarding nine-eleven. Lieutenant Siller's parents started the Stephen Siller Foundation, and the Tunnel to Towers Foundation is a part of that. I don't know if anybody had the good fortune of seeing the mobile exhibit when it was in Salem, it was in, in two thousand and nineteen, it was also in Hittery Trading Post earlier this year, but you can tell by the hair standing on my head. The Tunnel to Towers nine-eleven mobile exhibit is a fifty-three-foot tractor trail, you saw the video, all the sides come out, the back comes out, it's totally handicapped accessible. It's staffed by volunteers, and each station through it, six different stations, is manned by someone who was at ground zero on that day. by someone who was at ground zero on that day. The where, and working with Superintendent Black and the school board, is we're looking to bring the exhibit to the Londonderry Middle School, that front parking lot. We need an area about a hundred foot square, plus the parking and whatnot. So that's where we're looking to do this. The when is we're tentatively set. It'll arrive on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, April twenty-first of twenty twenty-seven. We tried for twenty twenty-six. That's our twenty-fifty anniversary. It'd also be my thirty-fifty anniversary being a volunteer. I thought that'd be a good way to retire. Unfortunately, because it is the twenty-fifty anniversary, the mobile exhibit is not going to run. Tunnel to Towers and the Stephen Siller Foundation are doing several larger events at every state in the country. So our first day would be that Thursday. We'll go Thursday, Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday, and then the breakdown is Monday the twenty-sixth. So why? We vowed never to forget. We can't. How many people remember, you know, the, the, the history between Pearl Harbor and how many years that's been and how much we forgot about that? We can't let this one go. More and more people are forgetting. I mean, it, you know, how many, none, none of them in the schools, and a lot of your teachers in the schools weren't around twenty-five, twenty-four years ago now. We're going to invite with the, with the help of the school board and Superintendent Black, we're going to invite a bunch of the middle school and high school students to attend. That'll be that Thursday and Friday morning. We're still tentative. Things are still up in the air a little bit, but looks like we'll be able to open up on Thursday and Friday at eight-thirty in the morning, go to about two or two-thirty in the afternoon just for students. And then we're going to have set times for military and first responders in uniform, so they can attend without waiting in the lines. When Salem did theirs in two thousand and nineteen, on Friday night, my wife and I showed up at roughly quarter after five. The exhibit ended at seven, and we were turned around because the line was that long. As part of the Car Seat Program, we've done Safety Day. We did it for sixteen or seventeen years, and I thought that was a big event, bringing in six or seven hundred people in a day. We're looking at thousands. And trust me, we are going to advertise the, like crazy. We want, we want to see lines. So the how is we can only sponsor this event with the help of the entire community, right? Your Old Home Day theme was join one, and we need to join one. It's not cheap. It's north of twenty-five thousand dollars to bring this into town. That includes the volunteers, their travel, hotel stays, meals, security, safety. The, the, the trailer itself is worth over a million dollars. There's only one person in the country that drives, well, there's three trailers across the country. And each trailer is assigned one driver, and that's all, that's all that they have. So I have had the pleasure, and, and I do mean that, the pleasure to discuss this with Superintendent Black and the school board, Deputy Chief LeBlanc and Acting Chief Heinrich, the Firefighters Union, Chief Bernard and Captain Cheatham. I met with the Londonderry Women's Club. We're on. We're, we're ready to do this. We have, we got our, we had one, it's not a stumbling block. It's less than twenty percent of the people that actually go to the, to the Tunnel to Towers Foundation to hold or host an event actually go through with it. And it's because they have such strict guidelines, insurance policies and whatnot. The big one, this big stumbling block, was the insurance policy. I spoke with Superintendent Black on Thursday, and the insurance company has granted us the rider for the days that we need. So that was our big stumbling block. So we're ready to, we're ready to continue. We'll get this going. We'll, communication-wise, we're going to advertise it. We're going to communicate. We're going to hold a, you know, a few community meetings. We'll have a committee together. I was able to meet up with four of the, I won't say founding fathers, but four of the people that actually put it together for Salem in, you know, what they did and what they went through. You know, you can do it and just say, okay, we'll bring it into town, and we're good, and that's it. But there's a lot more to it. But we're ready to go, and we can't, we can never forget. We have to remember that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions?
Vinnie, if we're expecting potentially large crowds and parking, was there any reason why the superintendent didn't want to have it at the high school parking lot instead?
Because the availability of that parking lot, A, is closer to the road, so more visibility. Also, looking at the different parking lots throughout the days, the school days, it seems to have the most available space for us without having to worry about it. We'll provide, just like you folks do with Old Home Days, we'll provide some type of shuttle transportation between the parking lots, and that's where the committee's really going to come in and be able to, to put it together.
Yeah, I'd probably recommend me working with them at that point in time, for like the weekend, just meeting, like, if you're going to put on Facebook, like, where to park.
Right. Yep, exactly.
If you're going to get the event out that way.
Yeah, the folks in Salem, folks in Salem, they, they lucked out. They did it at the mall at Rockingham Park, you know, which is just a gigantic, I mean, half the stores are closed, right? So it was just a big gigantic parking lot. But I, I learned an awful lot from them just in the little bit, the little bit of time that we, we spent together, but.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Vinnie?
Nope.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely. We'll be back. Yeah.
To our town.
We're looking forward to it, and we'll be back with more information.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you much.
Next up, I'm going to go out of order a little bit. We have some people from the Utility Committee here that would like to opine on the subject of discussing and creating a water fund to design the construction of waterline extensions. I'm going to take up that topic next. Mr. Mahalan, do you want to start it off?
Yeah, I'd ask that the folks that I've been working with on the Utilities Committee to come up here. These folks have been putting a lot of work into this, obviously, for a lot longer.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's important to recognize the fact that this is a partnership project with the committee, with staff. Kirsten's done a lot of work on this as well.
Vinnie, you want to come up?
Oh, yeah.
So they're going to jump in and speak.
Yeah.
We'll do this together.
Please.
So we need to, there's two things we need to take a look at here. What I'm asking for authorization is to continue to move forward with these, that will require two warrant articles. The first of which is a water, water capital reserve fund. We're going to need at least some seed money to be able to get the engineering to a point, the conceptual engineering done, so that we can apply for grants. We're looking at twelve projects right now, and I expect once those projects are completed, then we'll move on to others until we get all the areas that need to have municipal water to deal with contamination levels we have from PFAS and PFOA in our community. And that's a fairly large area. And there is grant money that is available. There's new trust fund money for the PFAS fund. There was eight million dollars that the state received from Free M, and there's two other lawsuits out there. We want to be in a position to take advantage of those funds. We've got to get ourselves, we have projects on the shelf, what I call grant-ready, and we're not there. So I really want to desperately get us in that spot so we can take advantage of the money that other communities will be taking advantage of. I want to make sure we're at the head of that line. So the first is to create a water capital reserve fund. So again, that will allow for the money for those conceptual, develop those conceptual grant applications. That's the engineering work that's necessary to do that. And some of them are going to also require matching funds. And this is one way to do that, is to get that established and set up. And that's for the water lines that would be in the roadway and the laterals that at least go to the curb stop. The curb stop is the edge of the, the municipal right-of-way. That is what that fund would be used for, as well as pump stations and, and tanks and those sorts of things that may be needed, depending upon where we are in the community. So that's kind of important there. Anybody else want to add anything in terms of the committee? Because again, I've been working with these folks on this in terms of the first fund that we're talking about. That's the capital reserve fund.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
John Ferrer.
Yeah.
I'm on the committee also. I know that what the town manager doing is, and is support staff, is partly procedural, but it's also important because it's one of those time benefit things. We have to get that person in place to get the drawings, to get the funds to put into the trust, because there might be some times when you've seen the criteria where we need two million dollars for this project, but it's being held up because of a appeal or something like that. But Project C and D are combined two million dollars. And that way, with the trust fund in place and getting grants from the state before they run out is so imperative. The past three years, the town, the committee, the work on it has made a lot of progress. But now it's the really, the money hits the road type. Yeah, the money hits the road. So I, I think everybody understands that. I just want to reiterate that. This is now time of, of the essence.
This is something we've been working on for, I believe, at least three or four years, so I'm very glad to see it come to fruition and actually have plans getting in place. So I want to thank you guys for all the work you did, you know, and on the Utility Committee, and putting this together, I think is very important. So I know I'm in full support of this fund. Does anybody on the committee have any other comments?
Yeah, I guess for the town manager. So essentially, we're setting this up so that it's a good placeholder for the money instead of just sitting into a fund. We're putting it into the capital reserve instead.
Yeah, we need to create a capital reserve fund. We don't have, if we had our own waterworks, we would have an enterprise fund, but we don't have that.
Okay.
Because that's normally where this would normally live, and you would use the unassigned fund balance and that, or you could also create capital reserve funds within it. But we don't have that, because there's a sep- separate statutes for waterworks to be able to put money away, but we, we don't own ours. So for us, this is the mechanism by which we would do that, is create this capital reserve fund to do that.
Wonderful. Thank you for the.
So I'll be coming back with you with the amount for this that I'm proposing to be put in that. That'll be part of the budget process. I think it's scheduled for.
So I guess that was going to be my other question, is that we're actually going to be looking to put money into this.
Yeah, create it.
In March.
Create it and then make appropriations in.
So we're not just like putting a dollar to it, we're actually putting money into this from where?
And I plan on using unassigned fund balance money to move into this.
Okay.
I don't, not interested in raising taxes. I'm sure you're not either.
Yeah.
When we have cash reserves, this is a good place to put those cash reserves. So we'll be talking more about that. We're still working with finance, working out the details on it and a couple of other funds, but you're going to see all those. So yes, one, we create it, and then, two, we make appropriations to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
And now I need your hard work to notify the community how important this is to vote for it, come out and vote. So I'll be tapping you guys to help me with the community engagement to get them all come out and vote for this, because it's very important for the town.
This is our job, and we're starting now.
Yes. So you have my full support, so.
I think similar to what we did last time for the bonding issue.
Yeah.
We need a public information session to educate people again. To get them along so they understand it's not a surprise to them what's going on. Again, I look at this as seed money that'll produce a crop of money from grants. So that's very important.
Well, and as I had put it in a way, I mean, I don't think a lot of people fully understand this. As you had mentioned, we had voted for the bonding for High Range Road. They may think, oh, aren't we all done with that now?
Wish.
So they may not realize, oh, we need to tackle this in multiple different facets.
Part of the public information thing, we plan on outlining what the ten project would encompass, the impact, the why, the how many people, things like that. And we can also add the things that were brought up tonight about if the water does go by your house, it's up to you to hook up to it. We're not forcing you to do anything, but we're providing a solution for people who have been impacted now for the last twelve years.
Right. And I think what a lot of people don't realize is what we had voted on before was giving the access for on the west side of High Range so that St. Cobain can do their connections to those streets. But this also gives us the ability for us to do now the second phase, along with the water capital reserve fund, to do the roads on the east side of High Range Road that we want to connect.
Absolutely. And I think it's important for the community to understand that it's not just the west side of High Range, it's the east side of High Range as well. I, I personally live on a road that's east of High Range, very close to what the consent decree is, but I'm not in it. And so it's going to help other people that do not have clean drinking water. Clean drinking water is of the utmost importance to our town. And, you know, we're kind of a baby town. We're growing now. We're going to get a water, water to our citizens.
Dave, you had a question?
Well, I'm for this. I, you know, I've been a big proponent with water. You and I have worked on many projects. I think the best thing about this, and this is something we really have to explain to people, is somebody who sat on the groundwater drinking commission, lots of times to get the grants, you have to have matching funds. And that's what I believe this is one of the things that you'll be able to do.
Absolutely.
With this, with this particular fund. So I'm, I support it. Are there any limitations to what this can go to, Mr. Town Manager?
So when we articulate the language, you do have to be specific. I mean, there is some general terminology, but you have to say what it's for. So people know that, okay, if I'm going to vote for this, I know what it's going to be used for. It's going to be for this and not this, that, and the other thing. So it's going to be for water lines, and it's going to be, again, for the pressure stations that be built in those places that need that, and stand pipes, water towers, where those are necessary to do that as well. Includes, includes the fire hydrants, all the pieces that go with the infrastructure that's in the right-of-way, or if we're running a line that goes across private property, if we have a inesment to do that. But it's those public portions of that, which is different than the next one we're going to talk about. So they're, be very specific about that.
So this is a kind of whack-a-doodle question, okay? So just say we get everything in how we envision it, and all of us, well, me and you, Dan, we won't be here, but when this is all done.
Wow.
We won't be here to see this.
I'll be here.
But you'll be here, maybe. But the thing is, the fire hydrants, right? Will this fund be able to pay part of the cost? So once we've got everything in place, just say, will this fund also be able to maintain, upkeep, and even pay part of the fire hydrant suppression, you know, the water? Because that costs a lot of money.
No.
So we'll never be able to do that.
It's for capital, that's why they call it a capital reserve, it's for capital items. When you initially go out and you make the capital investment in these pieces of infrastructure, that's what that is for.
So then this will eventually maybe back down a bit because we're going to need to...
We're not going to be able to put enough in there to meet the demand.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you, we'll, it's going to be fifteen, twenty-year project.
Well, I understand that. I'm talking out even further out. I mean, we're talking fifteen, twenty years, but you have to think further out, because this won't be able to maintain.
So get back to your point. Fifteen, twenty years, you're not going to be here.
I know, but I want to make sure, I want to make sure something's in place for the
people who will be here.
We don't, remember, we're not, we don't, because we don't have our own waterworks here, we don't own the infrastructure.
So they'll be responsible for it?
They're responsible for maintaining that. We're going to have to pay our normal fees, which we do, which covers the maintenance of those fire hydrants and those sorts of things.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to also know, there's other places other than certainly the, the High Range Road and east of that, but there's like Calico, which is further, that has PFAS. There are spots on the parts of the community that have PFAS, and we do have the ability to extend water not very far from that, because that's one of the projects we're looking at, is that neighborhood down there, Cala and Iris, because they do have PFAS, PFOA contamination. I just want to make sure those people realize we have, we're not forgetting about them. This applies to all those areas of town that are applicable.
I just want to say I'm in favor of this. I think this is a great, great thing that you guys put together. I love that there's a plan moving forward and that we can have, you know, projects ready to go, to get funding when it comes.
What you just did was kind of helpful in the sense that we're going to be doing an informational thing. And what you were asking, actually asking, is what we need to prepare, okay? Now, some of us.
Say a little devil's advocate, you know?
So, now, some of us, I, I can tell you the cost per foot through granite, through blasting, head pressure, that kind of stuff, we don't need to entertain the town with. We need to entertain them with, this is what it does. Why are we connecting A, which already has three hundred homes on a water system, with Why are we connecting A, which already has three hundred homes on a water system, with B, which is two miles away? And oh, by the way, why was the water tank there? What does that do for you? Um, how are fire hydrants? Well, I did a study and the fire hydrants really don't cost that much. And the pipes are designed to have fire hydrants. What about the cost of maintaining them? They don't. Penny Chuck takes care of that.
Yeah.
So, that's the kind of thing that we'll be coming back to you and cross working with the town manager.
Mm-hmm.
These two people about the questionnaire and how to present it. But that was very, that's what we need to do.
And we are in the process of also planning exactly that, to have a water meeting that we invite the town to, that will have a lot of different speakers, that will explain a lot of this to, we're working on that.
Excellent. Do you want to do the second part?
Okay, the second part, so there's two different funds, and they, they're very different statutorily, right? So, the Water Capital Reserve Fund must be established by the voters on the special warrant article. And the voters must make the appropriations to that. So, just to make, so when we talk about the next one, the Water Special Assessment Trust Fund is different in that it's actually created by the council. And we need initial appropriation, which would be done by the voters to put money initially. I don't believe the town of Londoners ever had a special assessment district. It's a statute that's been around for a very, very long time. Some communities have them, but a lot don't. Uh, and this is, uh, a little bit different than what most of them would be. Normally, you'd have a geographical area. You're going to make some improvement to a roadway. And the people who would, who'd receive the benefit, they get, they pay for that special assessment. Um, this is a little bit different. What, what that we're talking about here is an area where we would likely extend municipal water to. And then what we're going to do with it, this is, this is a voluntary program. Special assessments generally are not voluntary. So, if you live in that area, you benefit from it. You have to pay your percentage of your share of the cost based on your usage. This is a little bit different. We will have the geographical area, however, this is voluntary. And the purpose of this is to allow from the curb stop, in other words, from the edge of the person's property where there's a little gate valve in the ground, to the house. Right now, our folks are responsible for that, other than there's some state funds that are available to do that. If you live close to the roadway and you don't have ledge, maybe you can do that with that amount of money. But if you live further away, your house is further away, your business is further away, uh, and you have ledge, that could be expensive. Uh, and right now, you would have to come up with the cash to be able to do that. Or borrow the money at six percent or seven percent or wherever you could get a loan for to do that. What we're, we're proposing here is these folks, their water is contaminated by no fault of their own. We all are quite familiar with the circumstances here. So, one, if you're one of those property owners and you choose to do this, one, you must apply for the state program and take full advantage of that first. And that could be five to ten thousand dollars, depending whether you already have a poet system in place.
Yeah.
If you're in that area that's in the consent area, uh, the, um, uh, St. Cobain is required to pay for those components. But the folks east of that, and they're not in that consent area. So, they are only available, the only thing they can apply for is the state program. So, they're limited to that amount. But let's say you have a thirty thousand dollar water hookup and you get ten thousand from the state. You got to, you have to, as the property, you're going to come up with the twenty thousand dollars. For some people, that's difficult to do. Uh, what we're proposing here with the special assessment fund is you could come to us and say, I want to apply for this program. And then what would happen is we would, uh, basically reimburse them for the work that was done on their property for the twenty thousand dollars. But they have to pay us all that back. It looks like a loan, but it's not a loan because it's called a special assessment. And then what would happen is we would, uh, establish terms with that person anywhere from a year to twenty years to pay the town back. And the way they do that is through a tax bill. It's called a special assessment. And they are required to pay it. And it goes with the land, not with the owner. So, if it's a twenty year special assessment for that particular property, they only live there for five years. They're paying the incremental portion for five years, and the next owner pays it for the next fifteen years. You can pay it off early if you wish to. That would be the terms that we would establish in, in order to do that. And my recommendation is that you don't charge an interest fee, which you can do that, um, if you choose to. I would prefer a fee, the, uh, the, the processing fee to do that. So, that's covered the staffing that we would need to do that, a small amount to do that. Because remember, these people, they didn't contaminate their water, somebody else did. And unfortunately, we're not in a position to make, hold those who did that accountable. Um, so this is a way for us to help our folks. The money we put in that gets replenished when they have to pay us back. So, they'll get their regular tax bill and they will get a special assessment. If they don't pay it, it works the same as taxes. Their property can be tax needed and then turned over to the town. We would obviously, uh, sell it and then recoup our money and then that whole process that goes through that, which doesn't happen very often, as you know. That's how this would work in a nutshell. Normally, you'd want to do this first and then create the fund afterwards, but I'm running out of time. So, what I need to do is I need authorization to move forward with this. Because I'm going to bring you the whole package to a sap, establish a special assessment district, which the town council does. So, that, uh, I've scheduled it ten to be for January unless you tell me to push it up. But you're going to be a little busy in November and December with budgets. Um, so, I'll be working with the utilities. If you approve this and you tell me to keep moving forward and get this lined up, I'll work with the utilities committee, uh, committee to work out the details of that. And we would come back to you with all the details, what an application form looks like, what the agreement form looks like, and all the details about how this might work.
Mr. Town Manager, um, now, say, for example, for, if an individual all took advantage of monies from the state for the point of entry system, would that disqualify them for the ten thousand for the pipeline?
They get the difference, Ted. So, say they spent three thousand on a poet. No, if you, say you spent three thousand on the poet, they would get, they would get the difference. Or if you spent five thousand on a poet, you get five thousand. You'd get the difference back.
Difference of ten thousand.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So, then, in reality, then it's potentially could be twenty-five thousand dollars for a line.
No, no, you, you're, the limit from the state is ten thousand.
No, 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 I'm saying if it costs thirty thousand dollars potentially to run the line to your house, then it's going to be like twenty-five grand.
That's why it's important, I think, to do this.
I'm just trying to get that clarified for everyone here and at home that, you know, how the monies may or may not work or what the state.
As far as moving it up, it's very important to me. So, as long as we can meet Justin's deadline.
Mm-hmm.
For the warrant article, um.
Although warrant article, if you tell me, the more, I'm, I'm just, I mean, basically, it's already done, obviously, but you need to tell me to move forward and I'll do that.
So, as long as we, as long as we meet that deadline, I'm fine with whenever you want to put it on the, you know.
But I want to create the special assessment district in time for people in the spring, when they're likely to hook into that line on High Range Road. That would be eligible for that. Anybody else that we can extend on through there. Uh, so that, that, so that's the timing issue is to get that ready to roll for that period.
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, where are we coming up with the monies to go into this fund?
Same thing, unassigned fund balance, move it into there.
Okay.
That's what I'm proposing to do.
Okay, seems like quite a bit is coming out of UFB.
We have quite a bit in UFB right now.
Okay.
So.
Okay, just a little worry considering we've been told in the past by our finance director that we don't want to be spending that down too far. And now all of a sudden, it seems like lately we're spending quite a bit out of it.
So, we, we had that discussion, what we felt comfortable with the amount we could go down to, we could take out of there. And that's, we're getting to that point.
Okay.
Because we've got a couple of projects, as you know, coming up. So, we feel comfortable with that. You have to decide, that's ultimately your decision to do that. I'd rather not raise property taxes to do this. This is going to be a replenishment fund, because remember, people have to pay this money back into the system. So, I need to be able to do that and set it up for that. And I'm looking at about four hundred thousand dollars for that.
Okay.
Dan, a question?
All right, so I'm trying to follow you, Mr. Town Manager. You're saying four hundred thousand. So, let's say we have four hundred thousand in this, and we get more people request money than we have the money for. What do we do then?
So, you can do, you're, you're not a city. You can't do some metal appropriations during the year, wait until the next town meeting. Appropriate more.
Have to appropriate more money.
All right.
Or, or wait for more people to refund you.
Yeah.
May I speak to you about concern a little bit?
Yes.
So, the pace at which we can expand the water lines is a, is a check on that, to be really honest with you. The number of households to which we'll need this and the pace at which we would replenish it in the number of, how much money's in the capital reserve fund and the time it takes to get the money, that is going to provide a check on that as well. So, um, while it seems like it would be a rush to get it all out, there's going to be checks. It's not something that you're just going to be able to apply for before you even have hope of hooking up. So, the pace of the actual construction of the infrastructure is going to put a check on how many people can be requesting it at any certain time.
I'm just thinking that, you know, if we ran out of money, that we put a, uh, waiting list of the next people that would be available for it. That's all. I think this is great.
It is a great idea. And I, and I understand your concern, but the, the thing is, is the pipeline moves very slowly. So, it's only going to do so many houses or area at a time. And then once those people start paying back, that's going to start refunding so that they can move forward. But I do think you're right. We should have some sort of valve that, you know, you can apply, but we're not getting to your house till two years from now. So, we'll put you on the list, but you won't get the funds because it would be somebody who needed it, correct?
So, Dan, Deb, and Ron, we have a handle on the utilities committee of, of each project. And we can tell you that, okay, High Range Road is done. There is potential of forty hookups. Okay, we got a grant for the second one. That's going to be done a year from now. There's potential of twenty-five hookups. So, we will know in advance, as we progress through these projects, how many hookers we have. And that's some of the work that she's been doing. That's why she said, Dan, I wish we'd run out of money. That sounds weird, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this is a genius idea.
Yeah.
Good.
You don't need emotion or anything, right? Just need the consensus? Just need a consensus?
Yeah, I just need direction. This makes sense to you and keep working on it? Because if it doesn't, I might.
I'm good, too.
Yeah.
I'm good. Be animus, sir. Thank you guys for all your work on this and for your continued work in the future. I, I appreciate it. We'll need lots of advertising to get the word out for the vote, so.
We have just begun.
Awesome, Ray, I love it.
Just one more thing, so if people are listening, they don't have to sign up by a certain date.
No.
Because they can make decisions, you know, and maybe the president or doesn't want to do that. But the, the new one that wants to move in, that wants to do that, we're in a position where we have the ability. We're going to, we've been around a while, we're going to be here a long time, this town, so.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I was going to leave this a journal, but, um, a thought. As you see the town, we're going through this, and so is in Litchfield and other towns. And Ron, I've discussed this before. I would like to see, maybe if I have to write that bill that I have to do is in November eleventh, whatever they do if they want to propose a bill. And that is, I'd like to see the state put a total dollar stamp on what everybody is trying to do.
Excuse me.
I read some quick calculations. We're in the two billion dollar mark. And I think that would be something that the governor could bring to, you know, Congress or whatever that has to be done. And say, look, this is a huge problem. We've had a company come in, knowingly pollute our state, it's going to get us scot-free. And we're all learning. Well, now that we got the pipe in, oh, my goodness, it's, how are we going to pay to hook up every, every house? It, it's damage control that happened to people, that's not their fault. But the bill needs to be total calculated so everybody gets a big picture. My two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Up next, discussion and approval of the library memorandum of agreement. Mr. Mahoney.
So, as you know, this is, uh, an issue we talked about, uh, after I first got here. There was, uh, concern of provide clarity in regards to what services, the, um, force account labor services that the town provides to support the library. And there are a number of those. Our, our finance department provides their financial services. We do their accounts payable, uh, accounts receivable functions. Our HR department, uh, provides, uh, you know, the benefits and all those types of support items. Town manager's office provides advice and assistance as needed. Uh, legal counsel, there's a whole, I, IT services, there's a whole list here, as you can see. Facilities maintenance, uh, payroll services, uh, credit card usage. Uh, there's a list of seven on there in the, in the cover sheet. Uh, and this basically just for the details, how that's to work. Um, and this is to clarify that we have that arrangement. We provide those services to them, which is not untypical of most communities across our state. Uh, libraries can do this themselves if they choose to. We could provide them funds once or twice a year and they could do that. But then we'd be replicating what we're already doing. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. This is the most efficient way to do that, to provide that service to them. So, they can provide the service to the community that's really important to, to people. And this just outlines that, um, pretty straightforward. Uh, I've been told that they have approved this, uh, their board of trustees. So, I'm recommending that you, uh, agree to these terms and it would be signed, uh, by the chairperson to do that. I think it's important that the governing bodies do this. Some places, they just do it with the town manager, because I actually manage the services. But I think it's important that you sign it instead of me, um, that we're agreeing that the, this is how we're going to operate.
Any questions?
I think this is great. I think a lot of these things were done in the past, but not fully actually written out and clarified. I think it's good to actually have them be clarified. And I think it'd be really helpful to have a lot of the HR, um, functions also, I guess, be written out that they have access to them.
Any other questions or statements?
I got a few questions.
What?
So, uh, IT, if there's any cost for devices, is that cost being paid for by the library or the town?
Uh, we've been doing most of that. Yep.
So, the town han- handles the antivirus and malware protection as well?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Uh, payroll and administration. Um, I have a concern on the amount of services that are being requested by some of the trustees. Now, the trustees have asked finance to provide them with a breakdown on each employee, amount on vacation time, sick time, comp time, and when it was used and how much was left, et cetera. I get concerned that this takes away from our staff. So, how do we control such requests? Can we limit the people that can interact and request that from our staff? Maybe from the chair instead of every trustee member? Uh, that's my, my question.
We, we could, but I would prefer to be, exercise some patience and some flexibility with them. You know, we've got, um, a relatively new, uh, board of trustees. And you know, there's some difficulties and some struggles they're having over there. Uh, elected officials, people on the spot are arguably trying to do the best they can to figure it out. They're not experts in library or government. And I think we need to give those folks quite a bit of leeway, and, and we've been doing just that. But, you know, there, there are a lot of demands, especially lately, and I'm hoping that will subside over time here. Um, I guess that's the best way to answer that. I mean, I have the ability to control that, but I, I really don't want to, I don't want to shut that, shut down that communication we have with trustees. I think it's important that we support them and we try to help them through these, I, I'll call them challenging times.
Yeah, because I remember one, uh, where the trustees went in and they wanted all this documentation and they basically didn't use it. It was just, you know, got the information and that was it. So, um, I just get concerned that people like Justin and HR and, you know, are being taken away from their regular tasks for this. Uh, facilities and maintenance. Who pays for the ground maintenance, the snow removal? Uh, let's say that the parking lot needs to be repaved.
We do that.
So, that, that falls on the town?
Yeah, they, they actually own the building. They're responsible. The statute says any buildings, structures that are used by the library do fall under the jurisdiction of the board of trustees. But we provide the maintenance support for their HVAC. DPW's over there, working on systems over there. I think that is the most efficient way to do it, quite frankly, I really do. They're part of this larger campus that we maintain. Um, it makes sense for us to use our resources to do that.
So, if they, if their HVAC system went, is that something they've got in their budget? Or is this something we have to repair?
We, we, we repair that, yeah. We would have to take care of that. They don't, they don't really, they don't have the reserves. They don't have the ability to deal with anything catastrophic like that.
We've historically repaired HVACs and roofing problems and leaking problems. And as the town manager said, they don't have a capital reserve fund to replace their items like we do.
So, they have a pretty good deal going with the town because we pay for a lot of our, their stuff.
We pay for it anyway, though.
Right. I know it's all on the same tax bill, but I look at it and when we do the budget, at budget time, and, you know, last year when I was sitting on that side and you listen to some of the council members going, well, I want the library to cut and cut and cut. Uh, you know, I, I just look at that entire picture and say, all right, they're not paying for X, Y, and Z. Town is budgeting for that.
Well, it's just like at the fire department or police department that, you know, if their HVACs went there.
Right.
It would fall under our general budget for replacing those capital expenditures.
Right, but they're under our budget, not, they're so on separate budget, is what I'm looking at.
They fall under our umbrella.
Yeah.
I, I've seen at the other place where they, the library does not work well with the town, shall we say, that we don't have that actual situation here. We actually do, even though there's difficulties, but we have a, a working relationship with them. And when you have that, we're going to hire our own people, we're going to do our own maintenance, and you have a lot of duplication. And it doesn't, it's not in the taxpayer's best interest. And when you have that, we're gonna hire our own people, we're gonna do our own maintenance and you have a lot of duplication and it doesn't, it's not in the taxpayer's best interest. It makes sense for us to continue to work together with them to maintain those facilities, I think it's the most cost-effective way to get that done. If they had to hire their own people to do accounts payable, their own people to do HR, you're talking about additional staffing, that it makes sense to do that aggregated with us, the economy of scale, working with us. I mean, this is the most, I think the, the best model that we do have.
I'm just looking back at, you know, years ago, when town, library, school, how we all worked well together. I remember they needed custodial help and the school would send somebody over to help them with custodial service. So, I, I just think it's, it's great that we can all work together, I just wanted clarification on a lot of these things to know where they're coming from.
Any other questions? Do you need consensus from us, or do you need a voice?
Any, any, there's a motion, actually you have to authorize the chairperson to sign this agreement.
I'll move that the Londonderry Town Council hereby approves the proposed memorandum of agreement in partnership with the Leach Library Board of Trustees as proposed in the agenda packet for October 20th, 2025. Further council, further, Town Council Chairman Ron Dunn is authorized to execute the MOA which shall take effect upon approval by both bodies and execution by authorized officials of both bodies.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second?
Second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes in affirmative.
Next up is discussion to approve Londonderry Old Home Committee Articles of Agreement. Up again.
Thank you. So you have in front of you the Articles of Agreement that I said that I would bring to you last week. You can see they're not incredibly elaborate, they're, they follow the rules and regulations that the state requires and they step, they take, they go through the, they meet all the legal requirements of the first step there. And so if you look through and you don't have any issue, I'm asking that you sign these and so we can submit them into the state, this is the first step. And to that step, to that point, you can actually see that I've outlined the future steps that we're going to be moving through. And that's probably more useful to you at this point than the Articles of Agreement, because they are very, very straightforward, you know, the key things, no personal liability, no capital stock, no membership. Actually, we're shockingly easy to do. The next step would be to submit this with $25 to the state. And then from there, you would appoint your members on November 17th. And then they would meet and organize the nonprofit, they'd come up with bylaws, elect officers, banking resolutions, procedures, and that's something that our office will help with. And then they form the bank, they form the, they do the banking, set up the EIN, they register with a charitable trust, they apply to the IRS. And then it talks a little bit more about compliance that would need to be followed moving forward. So this is basically a guidance document for the rest of the process. Last time I spoke about the old home day, what last meeting when you talked about it, Councilor Paul mentioned the nonprofit resources. And have located the ones that she was talking about from the Hampshire Department of Justice, there is free training videos, they have free training videos and resources. So I will make those materials available to anybody who applies to be on that board of directors, so they can take a look at it.
I, I really think that should be a mandatory thing, like if you're gonna be on this board, you have to take this training. I really do, because we don't want them to make a mistake and that becomes a big legal brouhaha. I, I don't know, but that's just my opinion as one person.
We can make that as part of their appointment.
We can?
Yeah.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that's not something that would fall into the Articles of Agreement, because that's not something that the state is concerned with.
No, I'm thinking about us and our liability, you know.
When we, when we agree to appoint them, we can tell them that that's mandatory.
Okay, I think that's important.
Any other questions?
Thank you for doing that, Kristin.
Potentially, maybe if whoever puts on that training might be able to come to Town Hall for that, instead of having our members go up to wherever the training may be, to make it an ease of access.
Like a Zoom meeting or something, like they can do a Zoom?
Yeah.
Anything else from the council? Alright.
Oh, are we going to be posting out for the public for people to apply?
It is posted already.
Yeah, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Yep. So you have a consensus?
Excellent, thank you very much.
Next up, Justin has a financial unaudited update for us. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Absolutely. How is everyone tonight?
So far, Dan has kept the questions to a minimum, so.
So, I provided you guys with an update of the first quarter unaudited financials. I'm assuming you guys have it in front of you?
Yep.
Are you, are we able to put it up on the board? I believe so.
They are in the folder for us as well.
Nope, other one.
Other agenda, at the back button. It's normally the top one, except there's a meeting tomorrow. Yeah, I'm on auto violet, so.
Perfect, yep, right there, it's perfectly fine right now. So as you can see, the budget is working good at this point, we're about 25.21% of the way because of 31 days versus 30 days and all that fun. We're currently under budget. Any questions regarding this?
Anyone have any questions in the council? Go ahead, sir.
So, oh, the revenues are after. What I did, as I did previously, is I broke out the capital outlay and transfers just because of the way that they fluctuate the percentages and become very misleading in my opinion. If you were to look at the capital outlay and transfers to the capital reserve, you'll see that those have all been processed, those are typically processed the first week or two of July as required. The reason you're seeing that 641 is the rail trail warrant article. If you keep going, you'll see the revenues. I just want to point out that while we're below budget here, there are various items that are kind of a one-time hit. You look at payment of taxes, meals and rooms, highway block grant, we get that four times a year. If you remove those, we're approximately 28.16, which is actually above budget. Those are items that we know we're gonna be getting, they just, we don't get them in the first quarter, we get them whether it's second, third, or fourth. I've included the other funds we have here, which is our sewer enterprise fund, the outside police detail, the airport, as well as the recreation revolving. The revenues and the expenditures that are associated with those through the first quarter. That's the quick and easy, any questions?
Justin, under revenue, what is considered other miscellaneous revenue?
That is, like the credit card rebate. We have, we use bottom line pay mode X, in which we receive a rebate for ACH premiums, things of that nature. Should we receive essentially miscellaneous revenue throughout the year, that's where it will go.
Gotcha. Recreation department revenue. Let's see, we're expecting $7,000, we've received nothing so far?
That is essentially the, the summer program.
The summer program, okay, so we're not expecting that until the springtime?
Exactly.
Okay.
And going forward, that's one that will actually be moved directly to the revolving fund in the future budgets, as well as the expenses associated with that.
You went a little fast, did you say the general government item we haven't received yet, or not?
General government is the school districts reimbursing the town for gasoline, as well as their annual trash and recycling invoice. So those.
When is that maybe?
The trash and recycling is typically in June.
Gotcha.
And that's, to be honest, that is the largest chunk of that 218.
Yeah.
The gasoline is typically quarterly.
Okay.
But we bill quarterly, so this one has not been processed yet, because the bill would be going out.
I take it then, we, you were also saying with the meals and rooms tax?
We typically receive that in December.
December, okay. All of it or partial of it?
All of it.
Wow, okay.
Any other questions?
So Justin, I see we get $8,000 in boat licenses. Can we get any revenue for people who register snowmobiles or HRVs? Can they do that at Town Hall, we can get some revenue out of that?
I would have to check in with the town clerk in regards to what the requirements are and if they're different from the other items and if there's a registration from the town that's required to do so.
Yeah, 'cause I know, like, in Whitefield, they'll have, you can go register an OHRV there at Town Hall, they get part of that fee. So, if that's something that you could look into, that'd be great.
Yep.
That's it for me.
Any other questions?
I, I do.
Good answer.
For police and fire, how does this year compare to past couple of years? I know in past couple of years, fire used to be quite more overspent, so it's quite shocking to me that we're only at 25% for fire department, that's pretty impressive.
So, this fiscal year budget, if you remember, the overtime was addressed throughout the budget process, so you'll see that they're more in line with where they are as their overtime is more accurately reflected in the budget.
Wonderful, that's great to see, I know it was always a, a struggle and a nerve-wracking for not just their budget, but for the whole general budget upon how is this going to be affecting us throughout the whole rest of the year, I'm really glad to see how we're able to tackle this past budget cycle.
Yep.
Any other questions for Justin? Thank you for coming tonight to bring us this, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
You didn't spend the $1 on the budget committee all in one place, did you?
Next up, we're discussing creating a transportation infrastructure capital reserve fund, Mr. Mahoney.
So this is one, it obviously doesn't presently exist, same thing, you have to, one, create the fund, the voters have to do that, and two, put funds into it to be able to pay for the purposes of which it was created, and I have two primary purposes. One, traffic engine, traffic and engineering studies to improve intersections, sections of roadway, including drainage guardrails, reconfigure, reconfiguration of intersections of roadways, signing, traffic signals, pedestrian bicycle infrastructure. Right now, we have obviously a number of intersections, sections of roadway, and we don't have engineering studies for any of those, we don't have traffic studies on those, we don't have data. Other than when a developer is required to do that for a development project, then they'll hire somebody to do a traffic study and they'll make determinations of what the flow is through a particular intersection. We need to get ourselves in a position, once again, that we can apply for grants. When I first got here, I told you, we have two projects in the 10-year highway plan where other communities have a lot larger number. And we're one of the fastest-growing communities in the state, and obviously, we're the ninth-largest community in the state in terms of population. And we've got a lot that's going on here, a lot of pressures on our roadways, we hear a lot from residents, in fact, the survey results, we're talking about traffic at the master plan meeting the other night about how that's an important issue for residents. We need to be able to do that, we need, we need to get traffic counts, real-time traffic counts. And what I'm proposing to use this money for is things like traffic counters, permanent ones that are installed that also have the speed readout, the radar devices on there to help slow people down, but to give us data on what the speeds of vehicles are. We have a few of those in town, some of them don't work, we've been, we're working on getting those operational once again. A lot of them are operated by solar and they got trees covering them, so the batteries die on those. But also traffic counts, to see how many vehicles and what times of day. This does a couple of things for us, it allows us to focus our, the limited enforcement efforts we do have to the right place at the right time, the right day of the week when we're having speeding issues in a particular neighborhood or one of our arterial roadways. It also again gives us that traffic count, it's the precursor to being able to do the traffic studies, you'll have some of that raw data, which we don't presently have. And we can track it as new development occurs, ideally, you want to get these in place, and then when a new development comes in, you can see the impacts of that development and the development next to it, and so on and so forth, with real data. So that is one, one of the primary tools of doing that, and that will inform us in terms of what the planning board can do when a developer comes in and they want to do something, we can already see that level, certain intersections are, might be at a level F in terms of its service, that failure status. And this new development's gonna bring in new traffic, what needs to be done to improve that intersection. And also, again, allows us to develop those green applications, which we don't have good data to do right now for roadway improvements. So that's number one. Number two is funds for the construction of improvements to roadways, intersections, guardrail signs, traffic signals, pedestrian, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, right-of-way acquisition, traffic counting and speed measurement devices. Said funds could be used to construct these improvements solely with funds provided by the town, or with matching funds from other governmental entities or private entities. So that's, again, this is the matching fund piece. I'm not proposing that much money to be put in here, but at least it's a start to be able to do that. And then that will be partially funded with unassigned fund balance and some of it would have to be raised in taxes, but that's, we can discuss that mix when we get a little bit further on it. So that's why I'm proposing the creation of this fund for the purposes I've just detailed.
Any questions?
Well, it's not really a question, it's a statement. So if we, as a council, just say in the future, decide to do impact fees, this data gives us backup information in order to be able to calculate, you know, how we're gonna move that forward, you know, in other words, you, we had this amount of traffic, you came, it increased by 30%, and that's why we're calculating the 30%, is that correct? Were you not listening to me?
To you, but it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to make it simple, basic understanding.
Right, so that's why you have traffic studies of proposed developments and what the anticipated traffic impact is gonna be on those intersections that are gonna be around that area.
Right.
And then we, we're gonna have good, hopefully, we're gonna have good data as to what the existing situation is. Right now, you, you're, the way you do things here is you have the developer pay for, and they hire on their own, their own traffic study. Other places would say, okay, well, we're gonna do a traffic study, you want to pay for your own, you can do that, or we, as the municipality, will do it, and then you will pay us to do it. And that way, they're working for us and they're not working for the developer. There's a couple of different ways you can do that, or the developer can do it, you can say, we're gonna do a peer review. Because whoever the contractor works for, well, obviously, they're gonna weigh in that direction.
That's good, I just, I think it's good.
Any good? Yes, how much money are we looking to put towards this?
About $250,000.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. And a separate note, you had mentioned, we have some radar detecting devices around that work on solar. Maybe an item to move over to the police department as they move them around, the one that's on high-range road at the power lines right now. I don't know how long the battery life is on the solar, but I'm passing by it on Saturday mornings and I see it's not working.
Right.
So I don't know if it's just that it's not getting enough solar in general, or if the battery life in it from the solar doesn't last for, till the morning.
Well, the, the good thing about Londonderry, we have a lot of trees, and we don't want to get rid of them, so, some of them maybe have to be hardwired to be able to provide that data all, all year round, and the winter time too, we have a lot of cloudy days and you don't get as much sunlight.
Right.
And not as many hours of the day with the sun is out, and, you know, they don't, they just don't make enough, the batteries get older after a while. Basically, no one has really maintained those, and, I mean, I happen to drive around, I'm new here, so, and I see the the, well, it, it is being assigned to the same person who was also the tree warden, so it's not gonna be the police. Yeah, so for him, it's a double-edged sword, right? You know, I could cut the trees so the sun can, but then I'd be cutting the trees, so, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But anyway.
Just thought if that one might want to be moved, or if it's a proper location that they want it in, so that people can actually be more aware of the speed on high range.
Well, that's the thing, they need to be strategically located, be able to get, because they, they serve two, I want them to serve two purposes, traffic counting and also speed calming, hopefully. At least, again, we can target our efforts on that, and that information should be sent back to the PD, so we're looking at it real time in terms of what the issues are. So, we have a couple of them, some of them were, they were part of a development project, and those folks were required to do that, and they did that, but no one has been maintaining them since then. They were turned over to us, and so now DPW is gonna be in charge of all traffic signals, so they're the responsible party to maintain those and take care of those, and that's how we're gonna be doing it.
Sounds great. So a lot of this information that you're gonna gather, Mr. Town Manager, will also be shared with the Traffic Safety Committee?
Indeed, I have a traffic management working group that will be working, the Traffic Safety Committee meets quarterly. The Traffic Management Working Group will be leading, meeting at least month, monthly, we have a workshop that's coming up to identify all of the intersections and sections of roadway, because that has not been done yet, and that have traffic issues and congestion issues, whether it's speed problems. And we're also looking at traffic accident data and analyzing that, that really wasn't done before. We need to be doing that, to say, okay, we've got a number of accidents at these locations, these stretches of roadway, what is the cause? Is it speed, is it alcohol, impaired driving, is it red light running, what is it, distracted driving? And then we, again, you need to maximize the resources you have before we add more police officers and more vehicles. I'd rather say, okay, look, we know the speeding problem on this road is, it's at five, it's at 7:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning, as people are going to work, and it's in this direction. Let's target the limited resources we have to those locations, right place, right time, instead of guessing where that is. And again, looking at the accident data and using our resources in a more effective and efficient way to address the issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Yeah, good.
The Southern Hampshire Planning Commission, they do traffic studies quite a bit often.
Counts.
Or they do counts, okay, so how does that play into what we're looking to do? Is it another step further, another three steps further than what they do, or?
So what they do is they, they ask- So what they do is they ask us, they ask us where we'd want them to be, and we would tell them. And they use the little JMR devices, the little tubes that, you know...
The strips on the road, yeah.
Right. And we get them for a certain period of time, and they're gone. And then they're moving on to someplace else. I want consistent data, year after year, at the same location, so we can look at the trends that have occurred there and see what's going on, what are the impacts of that. We don't really have that historical data. You have a road here, and then next year, it might be over here. We need consistent data so we can see what that growth looks like.
Yeah. How do we get the consistent data during the winter time?
So that's why these radar devices, because the JMR has got the little tubes.
Yeah, they'll get torn up in the plows.
Right. The radar signs, they pick up every vehicle that goes by, all year round.
Wonderful.
Right. So that's why those, that's, using the different types of technologies is important.
Great.
Go ahead, Deb.
Could you just elaborate a little bit on this new group that you had mentioned that's going to be meeting monthly? Like, who's going to be on it?
It's staff.
Is it just staff? Is it going to be open to the public? Will it be, or is it quiet?
Well, it's not per se a public meeting, because it doesn't have any public officials. It just has staff.
No, but when I say meeting, that will the public be able to watch it? Will it be recorded?
No.
It won't be.
It's a staff meeting.
Just a staff meeting?
Right. And if someone tells me they want to go, I'm not going to say, you can't go. We don't do secret government.
I was just curious as to what it was about.
Council Bouchard is on the Traffic Safety Committee. He's not on it, but he wanted to participate. I'm like, yeah. John Wilson asked me as well if he could go. And I'm, I just have to give him the date in November that we're going to be having the next meeting. So, yeah, people can, I mean, again, I don't do secret government, so...
No, I'm just...
If folks want to go, they can certainly come.
I'm sure they heard you talk about it, and they're like, oh, what is this? I want to see where these intersections are. That's why I was asking.
I need a nimble group that's going to be able to move quickly and get things done. And that's why this workshop is identifying those. And all that material is going to be made available anyway.
Okay.
It's all going to be part of a larger plan to deal with these intersections. And again, we're not going to have enough money to deal with all these problems. But we can make, target the ones that are the worst and make some improvements and get some data. Without data, it's pretty hard to move forward and make decisions, for you to make decisions and for the public to make decisions, without information, right?
Correct.
So that's the start of the process.
Right.
I think one of the things, Deb, is last year, when they were looking at adding two police officers just for traffic. This way here, with all the information that he'll be able to gather, he'll be able to justify, yes, we need one person. This is the ours. We need that person for, to target these areas that we're having problems in, basically.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I'd rather use the grant money we have and the existing size police force we have without adding to it. Let's see what we can do to maximize the efficiency of that. And they do a good job, obviously, out there. In fact, you're going to see some data when you see the budget on the first, how they've really made some really good progress on that. But I think it's important, we maximize the use of what we have first before we consider adding any more positions.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
I'm good to go.
All right, good with it. You have a consensus, sir.
Okay.
All right. Up next, we have Council Paul.
Oh, God.
Discussing pocket parks. You're up.
All right. So basically, Lunnderry is a town with deep roots and is very proud of its identity. And I'm always thinking of ways in which we can enhance that. But as development accelerates, we're at risk at losing a lot of the charm that once defined who Lunnderry was. So pocket parks offer a simple, powerful solution to some of these issues. And these small spaces built on unused municipal land can restore beauty, build community, and support our environment. And there are very, very many kinds of parks. So don't just think it's a playground for the kids, because there are a wide variety of types of pocket parks out there. Parks are places to gather, to reflect, to breathe. They help kids reconnect with nature. They support our pollinators. They get rid of invasives. They even boast, excuse me, they even boost nearby property values. With a small, modest investment and strong civic partnership, we can turn overlooked corners into vibrant, welcoming spaces for everyone. This is about more than just landscaping. It's about restoring Lunnderry's soul, its character. So if we could act now by identifying some of these parcels, which I've done in the full-blown presentation that was in your package, I don't know if any of you read it, but we have isolated a few spots that we thought were good. And for the public, I will, ah, I will read those spots, if I could find it. Sorry. So we have near the Leech Library and the Town Hall as a core. There are a couple of spots that could have some space there. The musquash area where the parking lot is, before you even enter the musquash, a pocket park could be placed there in order to just, you know, put on your snowshoes, to be able to sit, to be able to put on your skis or leave your skis if you were going to go in and you realized, oh, it's too muddy. Here's a nice place where you can leave that. Or if you just, you know, finished your walk and you wanted to take a break before you jump into your car and be there, there is 274 Nashua Road by High Range Road. There's some acreage over there that things could be done. Anyway, I've listed a lot of them and some other things. But really, what I'm looking for from you guys is some questions. But I think that this is a thing that we can do that will show positivity, unity. And together, we can build these places that will help grow neighborhoods and help grow. And that's what Lunnderry wants, places to be proud of, places that we like. And we're conserving green space. Not that we don't have a lot of green space, but at the rate of growth, it does disappear rather quickly. So I would be willing to take any questions. I don't know if you guys read this at all, or...
I read through it, Deb. I have a couple of questions for you. They're not scary ones, by the way. So, for example, the one you mentioned, the musquash, who would be responsible for maintaining that? Would Conservation take that over?
They could, if they wanted to. Or it could be something else. It doesn't... If you look at it, I found that there are some grants monies for organizations like that to take over and maintain areas like that. There is a really nice spot that I know the Conservation Commission would love to enhance over on Scobie Pond Road. There's a road there that we would have more use for that pond and not interrupt the people on Brewster Road. This would be separate. So that would be a nice thing. There are different places, and each one would have to be figured out on its own. I can't say, oh, this is going to pay for all of this. And if someone comes forward with a pocket park, they can be trails between neighborhoods. For example, right behind us, going into Odison, there's like a trail there. We could make that more defined trail to encourage more walking from here to there, or from one neighborhood to another. So instead of kids having, who want to get a hold of us, and they have to go out and around onto a main street, they can kind of cut through. We have spots like this on subdivisions on Yellowstone. Years ago, we used to do this, and it encouraged community in the neighborhoods, where they would have block parties and things. And Yellowstone, the houses are a little closer together. There's this big spot. And then what happens is the people go there and they play baseball, and they have a little basketball court. And they have picnics there, like family picnics, and they have a block party. And it's a way to use that property. Now, they maintain that property. It's just like the people on Odison, who have taken in those circles and said, we're going to plant some beautiful things in there, and we're going to maintain them. The problem is, and why I want to bring it up, is some people don't know that they can do this. They don't know where these spots are. Someone in Lord and Commons had reached out to me and talked to me about, there's this area where there's this endangered turtle. And I guess there's a high population of them in that area. To be able to set aside town-owned land to encourage that population to grow and that, they can be nature pockets. They don't have to be a playground or a sitting park. A town forest is what you would consider a park. Then people love that forest. Somebody saw that as open land space, Mr. Kent Allen. He started cleaning it on his own. He maintained it. It's used every day. And it gives us added value in our community, a better quality of life that people seem to enjoy. And that is being maintained by, you know, he's now passed, may so rest in peace. But it's now being maintained by another gentleman. So things like that are the things we want to encourage, because that encourages community. And that's what I think, you know, with all the stuff going on in town and craziness in the world even, things like this, they're little, they don't sound like a lot, but they mean a lot to people. And it makes people proud. So that was, go ahead, your next question.
No, 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 that's a good... So in your vision of this, like Beautify Lunnderry or Conservation Commission could take on a project and develop their own little pocket park, and maybe they maintain it. And if a community, like you'd mentioned, wanted to do it, they would maintain it. So it wouldn't add any expense to the taxpayer. It would just be a community thing that a community does together.
Correct. Correct. And it can be encouraged in developments that come into town.
Dan just mentioned the Boy Scouts could do a project, right?
Or Girl Scouts.
Yeah, yeah.
Any of them.
It's called scouts.
But, yeah, but I mean, the first step is getting permission from you guys to just have the GIS director look at pieces of land. The thing I mentioned about invasives is very important. We have a huge problem with knotweed and with bittersweet. And by making this and cutting these areas back that we own, that have some of it, even if it's just doing that, cutting back these areas, it will help people who live near these areas not have so much in their own property. So they can get more of a handle on it, because the bittersweet is one of the things that goes around the vine, that goes around the trees. And during ice storms, what do we have? All these trees coming down because they're so weakened because of this invasive plant. And so...
We need education, too, because bittersweet is supposed to go in the trash, not into...
No.
Uh, no.
You let it dry on your driveway until it's dead.
Right. But bittersweet doesn't go, but bittersweet doesn't go to the recycling area.
No, please do not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I just want to know.
No, that and knotweed. And that's, when you cut, when we cut the lawns and the, what do you call it? The right-of-way with those blades, the knotweed things get on the blades, and it literally populates that way. It just needs one little cut for it to grow up again. And we also have the Russian olive, which is another invasive that is kind of taking over a lot of areas that are killing. But that's really what it is. It's no tax pressure on anybody. It's just looking at what we have, assessing it, and then, you know, getting that information, discuss things that we could do. That's it. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Yeah, I did read the packet.
So did I.
I did go on the town GIS, because I was curious to see, well, where would you put these things? And I found it interesting, because I don't think a lot of people know this, but the town owns 104 rear of Rockingham Road. And I said, where is that? It's three acres. It's actually on the rail trail. It butts the rail trail. And it's like, I looked at that, and I'm like, wow, that's a perfect place to have something like that. You know, people are out there walking, and, you know, you could pull into this little park if somebody maintained it. Yeah, so I found a lot of different areas in town that you could do something like that.
So even the arts council, the kids, the high school kids for art, they could make recycled art sculptures in some of these places that they might want to clear up for people to enjoy. Wind sculptures. They could do different things, which is, I think, great if we can get the kids to do that. I mean...
I mean, I looked at it, and when you brought this up, I started talking to my wife, who goes out with our grandkids. I've got six grandkids. And, you know, they love to go over here at the common, and they have the rocks that are painted and all that. And, you know, they paint rocks, and they put them there, and they see if anybody picked them up and if anybody put different ones there. And I remember when Mr. Kent Allen, I mean, we had that whole, you know, the wooded area over there by the common, just grow wild. And, you know, Mr. Kent Allen came in, and he went to the town council, and he says, I'd like to take on this project. And they said, go for it. And he's done great work over there, and he passed. And now we have somebody else that lives in town, that's been in town for a long time, to take over that project. So...
And in that area, there's the frog pond. And that could be enhanced. You could put nice wooden benches there for kids to sit and look for frogs, or maybe have collector jars for them. These are things that, you know, you want to get kids to know, what's nature? What do we have here? We have a lot. We have a lot to offer them. So that's it.
What do you think, Cat? Deb?
So I see this, I mean, it's nice to see more parks to potentially be done, but I also see it as drastically increasing our budget for our DPW, for maintaining all these lands and these different parks. It's mowing, it's maintaining, it's keeping down the shrubbery, it's maintaining whatever weeding that needs to be done. It's all those other items that need to be done with these different parcels of land. And I know that in the past, we would try to have developers putting trailways into their developments, and then the landowners would fight against it. Say, for example, the Nevins. They tried putting a trailway all around the Nevins, and then the landowners fought it, and they didn't want it done after the fact. So I think there's different areas that you got to look at, you know, maybe more strategically, and, you know, maybe take it at a slow pace, because this could really balloon our budget when it comes to DPW, maintaining these lands and these different parks.
DPW wouldn't maintain it.
Why not?
Does DPW maintain the forest? The people who maintains the little islands on Odison.
But if they're...
It's not DPW.
If they're pieces of land that we own, like the one at the end of the rail trail, we would most likely have to pay for that, because it's the land, the town owns the land.
How it would work is, once we have the land situated, people would apply. Oh, wow, that's in my neighborhood. I have a circle. I want to fill it in just like that. They would get permission from the town. It would be their responsibility to maintain that area. We would know what they were doing, how they were doing it. There is also had a lot of grants. If you read this, there's a lot of grants out there for people, for maintenance and building of it. And if it falls to the wayside, it falls to the wayside, just like our town forest. But at the moment, it's something positive in our community that could benefit. And, yeah, I remember that they didn't want trails there. But I do remember Mr. Mack coming to all of these meetings, begging for us to connect more neighborhoods together, having kids being able to walk from a neighborhood maybe to a school. We need to encourage more of that. You say you want a walkable community, a sense of community. That's what these things bring, a sense of community. They can be an area like in front of the access center that could be cleared, and you could put in the town, excuse me, town employees and teachers could go and sit and eat their lunch there, and they could have a ring toss or whatever, or while they're waiting for their kids who are playing a game. They can sit there with another child and do something in a very attractive area. That's all they are. They're not, that's how Dairy got their farmer's market, was through a pocket park. You could have somebody who might be at an end of a street who has a small farm in their backyard and says to the town, oh, can I take that area? Can I adopt it and put in this small, homegrown farmer's market for the people in our neighborhood? This one has eggs, and this one, and they can put up a stand, and it would be for our community. And that would be up to us as the council, once they applied for it, to see whether or not we thought, and that would be up to them to maintain.
I mean, I think, I don't want to see DPW doing the work. I don't want to see tax dollars paying for it. I sat on that side for years, and I always said, volunteers, volunteers, come on, we need to volunteer in this community. To me, that's what this is. This is a volunteer project. It's not, okay, we're going to call Dave up and say, Dave, can you get equipment down there to clear it out? No. It's call, you know, somebody that you know, and say, hey, do you have equipment that you can come down and clear this out? And they come out and they clear it out. It's volunteering. That's what I... I've been pushing this for a long time, that we need to volunteer in this community more like we used to. When I came here, and I look now, my wife and I were talking about it the other day, the population has doubled in this community since I came here. And, you know, when I first came here, we did a lot of volunteering. So that's my stand on it.
And I do want to mention that there was a letter of support from the planning board, Jeff Penta, who was in full support of this. He thought it was great. He even knew of a couple of Eagle Scouts that would be interested in doing some projects for it. So...
I'm not opposed, as long as it doesn't cost taxpayer money.
It shouldn't cost a dime.
You know, well, I think if you look at the trail behind us, Ron, that goes to the fields, that was an Eagle Scout project.
Yeah.
That was done. And it's great. People have used it. And to me, that's, it's nice to, if you have a... projects like that available for scouts or anybody that want to do it. Um, whether it's a school group that says, hey, we want to do this. So.
So it's, we were just, are gonna look at some land, see if we have some projects, then put it out there, see if there's any interest. It may fall dead in its face. I have no idea.
But if we talk to Conservation and see if they wanted to kick it off and, because they have a lot of resources, you know, that they already have, that maybe they have a small piece that they could do something with, you know, I'm just.
Conservation's right here.
I know, I was just saying, I'm just throwing out that we could start off.
They could, if they wanted to. I mean, I don't know. Or they could, they could put out a suggestion of a piece of property that they would like someone to come and enhance for them.
Do we need a consensus or we?
I just need to get the G, G. GPS, GIS.
Uh-huh, and is that something that we could just get the GPS data for, uh, for this?
Certainly, yeah. I, I think you're looking for town-owned pieces of, of land that we own. That's what you're looking for, identified.
Yeah. And where Mr. Malholland's from, you guys had some pocket parks, correct?
We had significant pocket parks.
And it was very positive in the community.
Beautification projects and we had businesses that donated, businesses that sent their staff over to maintain theirs, banks and, and manufacturing companies and made a big difference in the community. But there was a lot of participation with that. Some just wanted to provide money. And we contracted out for someone to maintain those, but it really did, uh, spruce up those, we had, we had urban areas there.
And, and like I, I'll point out in Allenstown, which is another place you were, they have those nice bridges and the people that put the flowers on the bridges that water them and the little, they drive with a car with a watering can and they water their plants. And it's really pretty. I mean, it's that simple is putting something like that in, but it's beautiful and everybody can enjoy it. And I'm sorry, Marge. I didn't mean to give you work.
All right, we're good.
I'm good with it. I think we should look, explore it.
Um, next up, old business. Uh, consider feedback on the draft revised ethics code amended. The town manager obtained further comments on the revised draft. You, you're up?
Thank you. Sorry, listen to my voice. So you have in front of you the draft of the ethics code that you had agreed at the July 21st, 2025 meeting to launch the process of establishing. Over the course of the ensuing roughly two and a half months, the town manager gra- gathered feedback from staff, boards and committees, and at a public information session. What we are asking today is you to review the proposed changes, see if you would like to incorporate the proposed changes into a new draft and authorize the town manager to continue the project by going back out to everybody and to the public one more time. So you'll see after the draft, you have a list of nine proposed edits. Some of them are minor, such as the first one, which is fixing the misplacement of a word as a typo. Um, some are more significant that involve rewriting and we provided some draft language there. And some, um, you'll also see there whether the staff has opined on, if it is something the staff endorses, has no opinion on, or suggests that perhaps it might not be the best edit to incorporate for whatever indicated reason is.
Any, you want to start there? Good. Ready to go, Dan?
Of course I have a question. So I'm looking at the, uh, and I'm not exactly sure wh- where this falls. Maybe it's under, uh, proposed edit five in section 4.4, which raises the maximum value of allowable gift from fifty to seventy-five dollars. What if a company, uh, or an elected official wanted to donate, uh, go to the fire department, uh, and we're gonna donate a meal to them or something like that? Is that allowed or is that, we have to go through a certain process?
So the way, the way that, uh, the proposed writing in there, just to, we'll start from the baseline. Anything that would be considered to in, try to influence a public official, whether it's less than seventy-five or fifty dollars, if it's five dollars, if that's being used to influence that public official to get special dispensation on something, that is not permitted, period, right? Otherwise, you know, if you, if you have a death in the family and someone wants to give you flowers, most of them, not fifty dollars anymore, unfortunately. They wouldn't be able to actually do that. It'd be in violation for you to accept those flowers if you're an employee or a public official, right? So food and things like that, that's, that's up to those departments if they want to accept those, as long as it, again, is not, they're not expecting a certain degree of favoritism, um, that would create conflict of interest. So they can accept those items.
So just to clarify something, uh, when I worked for the town and my firstborn, um, came to this beautiful town, the town council sent my wife flowers. Is that something we could do without an issue?
Yeah, the town council can do, because remember, when you're not an outside entity.
Yeah.
Let's say that some insurance company wants to gain favor, right? Wants to make sure that.
Right.
They want you to vote in favor of something that's gonna benefit their business, right? And that's where you have an issue.
Okay.
That's when it'll be clear. But trying to set a dollar amount just creates, uh, some level of acceptance where if you're getting flowers from somebody because you had a death in the family, it makes it rather easy, right? Um, to do that. If someone wants to bring, uh, a box of Joe to the fire department for doing a good job because their house caught fire the other day and wanted to thank them for doing that, they can do that.
That's all I'm looking for.
They're not asking for a special dispensation in that particular case.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. I can't be doing this.
So perhaps.
That's the only question.
It might be useful to go through them one at a time very quick. Some of them will go quickly. Some of them might have some language, but just.
That was the only thing I had. I mean, I thought everything else was good.
You guys are all set with all of the edits and then which case I'll move back off and leave sooner.
I, I attended the meeting and I thought it went very well.
Yeah.
You know, people, I thought the comments were, you know, very well presented and, um, any emotions? Uh, let's see.
Just consider, number, just consider number nine at the bottom. We made some comments on that you might want to think about.
So, yeah, so number nine, there was somebody that suggested that we include language in the policy that specifically enumerates the ability of the public to request items to be added to the agenda of all boards. This specifically, in reviewing it, it's an operational concern related to individual boards' rules of procedures. This, and as it is such, it's in conflict with the town charter. And so as an element of the code of ethics, we don't endorse this edit, but it's certainly something that to call your attention to, that the town council could deal with in another way. Um, so that's the one that we suggest that may not belong in here. Um, we took no position on at, on proposed edit two, which is the policy adding a sentence specifically stating this policy does not apply to employees, officials or volunteers of the Leach Library or the Leonardary School District. Um, whether we enumerate that or not, that is the truth. However, if you choose to add that language for transparency or understanding, either way, it doesn't change the, the actual policy itself.
I think from being at the meeting, it was more for clarification. Because they, 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 the public doesn't always understand that the library is not in the control of the town. So.
Absolutely. And that's why we don't, that's why we didn't take a spot either way. That's up to you.
The only thing I, you want, want to think about is they've talked about whether or not they could use our code of ethics. That would be their own action if they choose to. We want to adopt what the town has and operate under the same code of ethics. I think that's, they can do that on their own.
Correct.
This just clarifies that you are not taking the action saying that libraries have to follow these rules.
And the other one that we did not endorse is proposed edit number three, which is moving the contents of section 2.0 scope before section 1.0 purpose in the policy document. And this is just largely in the interest of maintaining consistency across all administrative and council policy formatting. All of them have, and you'll notice if you look across them, they all have purpose and scope as one and two. And that's applicable whether it's a policy or even into the code. So as planning for the future, we suggest that we leave the order of the paragraphs the way they are.
So I understand that the only one you're really questioning is, uh, proposed edit nine?
If you'd like to address that or not.
I think we should hold off on that until the new council comes, because we're gonna have to redo the, the, the thingy then. So.
And the public already has the ability to do this.
Right, but I'm saying, eh, when we redo our town council rules again.
Yeah.
It can get brought up and if they want to do it or not do it.
Strike you for now?
That's what I think. I mean.
Well, it's not part of really ethics anyway.
Right, it's not. It's, it's rules.
Uh, I'm good with whatever you want to do. Okay. You're good with, all right, so we're in consensual strike number nine and leave the rest.
Okay, so you're comfortable with following the staff guidance in this document?
Yep, except for, we want to do number three though. Leave that the same. Yeah.
You want, okay, so you'd like.
So ju- just strike number nine and leave the rest the same.
Nine, don't do nine. And then what was the jurisdiction on three? You do want to switch the order?
We'll leave the, we'll leave the rest the same for now.
So, okay, but so right now the order is, purpose statement is one and two is the scope. It's supposed to propose to switch those.
Okay.
Do you agree with switching them or keeping them the same format throughout?
I would say keep them where they are. It goes in format with the rest of our documents. Okay.
However, you did want to add the ed, proposed edit two, which is that sentence clarifying who applies to. Yes, okay.
That is, that was important from the meeting. It was definitely brought up.
By a couple of people.
Yeah.
All right. So you will, so you agree with the staff comments on everything and then in two, you, you're saying yay.
Yes. Thank you.
So thi- this is, this was a really good, some of you were here. It was a really good, I think, public engagement session. And, and you can see there's a lot of changes. I think these are really good changes that we're gonna be able to do. So we told you at the beginning, this is gonna be an elongated process. All the boards and committees are allowed to provide comment, staff. Now we'll take this and we'll start back over again. We'll make the changes, create a new draft. We'll go out back to boards and committees again if they wish to make comment, uh, staff. And then we'll go back to another public engagement session with a new draft. And, you know, we'll see if there's any further changes of that, then we'll come back to you again. And then hopefully you'll do the first reading and this is actually gonna be a code provision in the municipal code, uh, not a, a policy what it was originally drafted as. And then you would have to approve that after a public hearing. So there's other opportunities for public engagement. We deliberately wanted this to be a process that took time so people could think about it and, uh, work our way through it. We don't need to rush this and that's where we are.
Excellent. We all good? All right. Moving on, approval of the consent items. I will accept the motion to accept the consent items.
So moved.
Moved by Ted.
Second.
Second by Deb. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes the affirmative. Other business, uh, liaison reports.
Any liaison reports tonight? I have Heritage Commission coming up this Thursday.
I got nothing, no. All right. Town manager report.
So a couple of things, um, our initial discussions with Murray's Auto Recycling have resulted in the process not going any further. I'll just leave it at that. Um, so, uh, there's nothing further to do. You had tasked me with coming back to you with some recommendations. And we needed to do some due diligence and that required cooperation from the property owner. Initially received that and then they have rescinded that. So at this point, that project, uh, at least that, um, study of that is at a standstill. Wanted to make you aware of that. And then I just wanted to go over the agenda for the next couple of minutes. Remember tomorrow, we have a special meeting, a joint meeting with the school board to talk about the latest updates and the concept of the, uh, school district administrative office right on the other side of this wall here. Uh, that project is, uh, the study on that has worked out very well. I would, I would suggest to you, certainly, uh, Councilor Coombs is the council rep on that. And this is an opportunity, as Councilor Paul had talked about, where the two boards get together and talk about issues. And this is clearly one of those. So we have an opportunity to do that. We'll be meeting over at the high school at, uh, 7:00 PM in, I think it's the cafeteria if I remember right. So that's tomorrow. And we're, we're there just for that. There's no decisions to be made. It's to give you an update. And if there are any concerns, that would be a good time to discuss them, obviously, because the next step for us is to develop the warrant articles that are necessary to, uh, initiate that project. And then we have on November 1st, we have the initial budget presentation. There'll be an overview starting at 9:00 AM in this room. The public is allowed to obviously come here and watch the proceedings. Uh, then we'll make those presentations to the budget committee and the council. We'll be doing the police department budget and then, uh, the fire department budget and DPW budget on that particular day. And then, um, on November 3rd, we will have the town manager budget and the other ancillary budgets that go along that are indicated in the packet, town clerk, tax collector, finance, assessing, information technology, and planning. Remember, all these smaller departments, which my understanding is did not make presentations in the past, will be making those now to you. Um, and then we have November 10th, budget workshop, cable, recreation, solid waste, sewer fund, senior affairs, library. Um, and then we have the warrant articles. So it's a fast process, uh, that we go through here. Remember, we talked about next year is going to be, uh, more deliberate and more spaced out process than what we're doing this year. But, uh, this is what we have in front of us. Um, and then we have the 17th, um, is basically a review, a second, uh, bite at the apple to ask more questions about the budgets and work our way through that. And that goes that way through December as well. The key thing is on the nights when a particular budget is, is, uh, set up for the agenda, that's the night we should be talking about that area only. So that way the members of the public who come know that that's what the issue is gonna be about. These are workshops, they're not public hearings. So there's no public input at those. But there are opportunities for the public to provide input. In fact, Kirsten did a pretty good job of setting up a new budget page. And, uh, my experience where I've worked in the past, we get a lot of input through that, a lot of questions, which is really helpful to us. Uh, so there's a, a mechanism by which to do that. Of course, people can reach out to their counselors at any time. We have a mechanism by which to do that, to provide input, uh, on the budget or any other matter. So those are out there to do that. We're here to answer questions. A lot of times it's people have questions, they don't understand it, and if they use that tool, be able to help them, uh, answer those questions. So that is my, uh, presentation for you folks, uh, for tonight.
Any questions for the town manager?
I just want to say thank you for letting people have that input on the budget. I know in the past, that wasn't really the case, wait out there till you had a public hearing. But I think it's great that they can email and, you know, send in their concerns. Thank you.
Just one other thing, remember we have our first public engagement session, the town hall meeting on the 13th of November at the Orchard View Christian, uh, facility over there. So that's more of a round type of, a more comfortable environment. We don't have a wall between our citizens and us to be able to, people can ask any questions they want to ask. I'll be facilitating that, that session. So that'll be our first one that I would like to do on a quarterly basis to give our, what I call true public engagement. Coming in here and taking public comment is certainly helpful, but we're generally not engaging with people and having a discussion, which is what this is actually set up to be doing. Uh, so hopefully we get a good turnout. We're gonna be publicized in that. Kirsten's got a pretty good strategy to get the information out to people. Hopefully we'll get folks that will attend and we can help, uh, answer some of their questions and, uh, provide a certain degree of understanding of what's going on in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, for the, for the town manager, um, on the questions for the budget, when people email us, will those questions be made public here? Like, will somebody say, oh, we got a question and, or you're just gonna respond to them? Because if they have one que- that question, you know, twenty other people do. And I didn't know if that was something you were gonna, I mean, how are you gonna handle that?
What we did is depending upon what it was, um, we would bring those up in the meeting, but I want to be careful about spotlighting somebody.
Well, just say a question was asked and this is what the answer was. Because usually if one person has the, you know, a bunch of other people have the same question.
It worked really well. When we set this up where I was before, we got a lot of inquiries, a lot of inquiries. And a lot of it was, I didn't know I could ask these questions or who to go ask them to. And then the council sees all of them and they see, and I usually, I'm usually the person who'd respond to them and you see the responses as well. So it's kind of helpful for folks to do that. And we didn't realize, and we, we do this work, right? So we have a better understanding of it. A lot of people are out there, don't really understand how the budget works. I mean, it's a lot of money, right? And there's a lot of complexity to it. So it's, it's just another way that they can do that. A lot of folks can't attend these meetings, but they can, you know, on their cell phone, if they're in between an appointment or something, can ask a question on there. It's a little bit easier for them. It's just another mode to be able to use to allow the public to engage with us.
Assistant town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll switch gears a little from budget and talk a little bit about master plan. So the master plan steering committee, um, met last week, had a really productive meeting. Our next significant, um, work session is going to be November 6th. And that's regarding the future land use map workshop. So that's, um, you'll be seeing more detail about that from the committee members through social media. I believe something was submitted to the Leonardary Times as well. But that's really a public engagement session, a hands-on work session. We're looking for the public to attend and provide input and feedback and really engage in this process. So. Engage in this process, so. November sixth, six PM in this room. And like I say, you'll see a lot more of that, um. This week in terms of promoting that event and hopefully getting people to attend.
Excellent. Allohom public comment.
Uh, uh-oh, seems I'm still here.
Uh, what I heard this evening was very inspiring. A lot of great ideas and I think we're making some really good steps forward. And, um. The town manager here and others. Um. Working and, and listening to the gen- general public, um, I think is great. Uh, I think, uh. Some of the ideas that Deb came forward with about pocket parks and so forth. Um, you know, that, um, and we, we can get volunteers. To do some of this and inspire and the young people. So, um, I think this is all great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn.
See, now I'll close for the comment.
Second.
I'll accept the motion from Ted to adjourn, second from Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you.
Not even ten o'clock. Dan, you did good.
Yeah, I did.
Did good, huh?